Okay, good evening. This is July 13, 2022, special meeting of the New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission. Lynn, can you explain to the public and to Zoom land how you run this hybrid meeting, please?
Okay. Um, the hybrid meeting, so we've got people attending both in the room in person and people online. So when it comes time for the public hearing portion of this meeting for people to speak, we'll take comments from people in the room first, and then we'll take comments from people online. When you're online, if you could just raise your icon hand for us, then we'll be able to find you quicker. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thank you. Do the roll call. John Goodwin, I'm here. Ken Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Dan Redman.
Here.
John Chris.
Here.
There to Scornia is not here. Kristin Nielsen's not here. Arthur Cassavant.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Chris Herring.
Here.
James Bash.
Here.
Paul Knack.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Herring, you are seated for Mrs. Nielsen and Mr. Knagg, you are seated for Ms. Scornia. The way the the meeting's going to flow tonight is we're going to start with hearing some of the advisors to the commission that we have hired, paid for by the applicant. They are going to present commissioners will then ask them questions and then the applicant will have the opportunity to ask them question as well. We'll then go on to the public. The one thing that I request from the public is what's most valuable to the commission is any experts or specialists that the public may have engaged. So I'm going to respectfully ask that we start with them and then open it up to the more general public. And I request, this is obviously a difficult situation, and I expect every, I request everybody be as brief as possible and also courteous. Before we get going, I'd like to make a statement. Tonight, we will be hearing from the towns experts as well as public comment. As stated, tonight, we will be hearing from the towns experts as well as public comment on the three-part application that WE Partners LLC has submitted on 751 Weed Street for Regulation Amendment, Zone Change and Site Plan Approval. I expect we will continue this public hearing and we will continue it to the P and Z's regularly scheduled July meeting, which is Tuesday, July 26, 2022. By our calculations, July 26, 2022 will be day 34 of the 35 days allotted to hold a public hearing. The applicant has already indicated in their narrative letter that they will grant any necessary extension, so we will proceed accordingly. Based upon the town's calculations, the date of receipt for the application is April 26, 2022, which was day 57 of a 65-day window to open a public hearing on their three-part application. Attorney Hollister, do you have any comments at this point? Okay, great. In that case, I would like to ask Attorney Gelderman, attorney to the commission, to make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Just wanted to make a couple of comments because as the commission knows, Attorney Hollister made a claim that the site plan portion of the application was automatically approved because the commission did not act on it within 65 days after it was received. Just want to tell the commission that we disagree and we suggest that the commission continue to hear this matter in the normal course under the timeline set forth in the general statutes for all public hearing applications. For example, text changes, special permit map changes, re-subdivisions. Some of the reasons we believe Attorney Hollister's claims are wrong, if not disingenuous, are the following. In his application submission, Attorney Hollister wrote, and this is a quote, "One application period while this application has three parts, text amendment, zone boundary change, and the site plan. The parts are integrally related and should be considered, noticed, and heard as a unified application at a combined public hearing. The applicant will grant extensions of time if necessary to enable and ensure consideration of all parts on the same time track. Now, this, this is not a request. This is an affirmative statement of the applicant's position, and the statement speaks for itself. It also affirmatively consents to any necessary extensions. Second, in his letter claiming automatic approval, Attorney Hollister refers to section 8-3 G1 of the Connecticut General Statutes to support his argument that the site plan has been automatically approved." In his letter, Attorney Hollister actually misquotes the statute. He says that that statute provides that if a zoning commission does not take action to deny or modify a site plan application within 65 days of receipt, that application is deemed approved. Actually, what that section says is "Approval of a site plan shall be presumed unless a decision to deny or modify it is rendered within the period specified in section 8-7D." Section 8-7D sub B states that "Whenever the approval of a site plan is the only requirement to be met or remaining to be met under the zoning regulations for any building, use, or structure, a decision on an application for approval of a site plan shall be rendered not later than 65 days." The site plan was not, the site plan application was not filed as a standalone application. Mr. Hollister wants to claim now that the filing of the map change and the text change was merely his preference and not a necessity, and that he could have filed the site plan alone. My response simply would be, well, yes, you could have, but you did not. You filed all three applications together and stated that they should be considered as one application. The third reason is there's a, and this may not be all of the reasons, I'm just giving three of them tonight. A related provision comes from the New Canaan zoning regulations. Section 8-2, 8.2. F of the New Canaan zoning regulations provides that whenever a site plan application is filed in conjunction with another application requiring a public hearing, such as a special permit or zone change application, the time period for acting on the site plan application shall coincide with the time period for acting on the related application. So it's, it's at least clear to us that the site plan has not been automatically approved. We would suggest that the commission continue to hear testimony and act on it in the same timeframe as the map amendment and the text amendment. And that's, that's it.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Gelderman. I now have to read the three applications that we're hearing tonight. So there are seats here in the middle of the room. So if anybody cares to take a seat, please avail yourself of grabbing those seats. Item number one, discussion consideration request of Timothy Hollister, Henley Allen Authorized Agent for WE Partners LLC as Development Plan Applicant in 751 Weed Street LLC as owners for an 830 G set aside development of 102 dwelling unit multi-family development located at 751 Weed Street, One Acre Zone for zoning regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations dated June 16, 2007, revised August 16, 2021 to add section 511 Transit Oriented Multi-Families Zone TOMZ. Item number two, upon application Timothy Hollister, Henley Allen Authorized Agent for WE Partners LLC as Development Plan Applicant in 751 Weed Street LLC as owners for petition for change in zoning boundary for property currently in One Acre Zone. The requested change is to designate the property located at 751 Weed Street as TOMZ Transit Oriented Multi-Families Zone. Item number three, discussion and consideration of the request of Timothy Hollister, Henley Allen Authorized Agent for WE Partners LLC as Development Applicant in 751 Weed Street LLC as owners for an 830 G set aside site plan application for the property located at 751 Weed Street. We were going to hear from Mr. Thompson and Mr. Kingsbury tonight. I'll also note that we do have on hand commissioners. We have Deputy Chief Police of De Federico. We have Fire Chief Bassett. We have Fire Marshal Payne and Town Engineer Coplet. Mr. Thompson, why don't you present, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, general public and staff. For the record, my name is John Thompson. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, and I've been retained by the New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission to undertake a peer review of the traffic study that was prepared for this application. And starting my presentation, I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible. And the commission has seen the traffic study and also my peer review letter. For the benefit of the, the public present, I do not take an advocacy role in reviewing the traffic study. I don't take an opposition role. My responsibility to the town and the commission is to undertake an independent peer review on the technical merits of the application that was submitted for this proposed development. The traffic engineer that was retained by the applicant for the study is solely engineering, and they prepared a study that was dated November 15, 2021. Traffic engineers follow a fairly standard procedure in conducting a traffic study and submitting a traffic assessment report. In general, the solely study was very consistent with that process and followed the general outline for the preparation of such a study. I did find during the conduct of my review, a number of administrative areas that I rose question about to them in, in my peer review letter to that the commission received prior to the, the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Without getting into all of the, the details of what the study entailed, and I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions the commission has or the public has on how the study was conducted or findings. I, I do want to share that there was a number of areas that raised major concern during my review that were addressed partially in this traffic study, but required, in my opinion, further analysis and evaluation by the traffic engineering consultant. Starting off on Elm Street, the, as many of you may be aware, I know the commission is certainly aware, the applicant's proposing changing the location of the main site driveway that accessing Elm Street closer to the Weed Street intersection. And that's done on the presumption that in order to achieve adequate sight lines, they need to pull it away from the wall further, further to the west so that you could have proper sight lines in both directions. Part of their analysis also focused on what traffic engineers define as level of service. Much like the school grading system, it's A, B, C, D, E, F, and A being the best and F representing a failed condition. The existing conditions at the intersection, stop sign controlled intersection of Elm Street and Weed Street prior to the proposed traffic being added was a level of service E. That's pretty, pretty bad, pretty unacceptable in the way that traffic engineers measure things. With the proposed development, that level of service deteriorates to a level of service F, which is the lowest failed condition. Levels of service are measured by vehicle delay at the intersection. So we're now talking about intersection delays that are starting to exceed almost a minute of delay on average for the vehicles on Elm Street desiring to make a left turn southbound onto Weed or northbound onto Weed at the intersection. One of the concerns that I expressed to the traffic engineer was while the level of service is already pretty bad, they're making it worse. And it seemed that they were offering no attempt at mitigating that level, that deterioration in the level of service. As standard practice, traffic engineers, when they find unacceptable conditions, whether it's existing or future proposed, we always want to say, can we do something to make it better? And, and in this particular case, the applicant's traffic engineer offered no mitigation whatsoever, whether it's a two-lane approach, a multiway stop sign, a traffic control signal. There's a myriad of traffic engineering strategies that are available, but none of them have been represented at this, during this process. The, the applicant also is proposing as part of this development project, the integration of a new crosswalk across Elm Street at the Weed Street intersection. I'm certain that I don't need to tell anybody in this room that that intersection has a fairly sophisticated pedestrian crossing device that pedestrian pushes the button, it lights up a flashing beacon and alerts the vehicle traffic to the presence of a pedestrian crossing street. That was installed because this is a primary route to your park from the downtown area, from the residential area, and all measures to get pedestrians safely across the street were considered, and ultimately that beacon was put in, put in. The applicant is proposing the addition of another crosswalk at the intersection across Elm Street at the intersection of Weed. Probably a good idea to define a safe pedestrian pathway from the development project across the street. However, when we put this pedestrian crosswalk in, it has multiple effects. It pushes the stop bar where the vehicle has to make his initial stop before entering the intersection, looking north and south. It pushes the stop bar back by another 30 feet or so, and in conjunction with the relocation of the driveway entering the site on Elm Street, it reduces the distance for vehicles to store while they're waiting to leave Elm Street and get onto Weed Street northbound and southbound. Again, the applicant, this was, everything I'm telling you has been brought to the applicant's attention. It's my understanding that they, they're moving forward in trying to address these issues. So I, I don't have that. I'm summarizing the findings, the big issues that I saw during the, my review of, of the traffic study. Essentially, what, what this does is right now, there's approximately 200 feet between the driveway on Elm Street and the stop bar at, on Elm Street at Weed Street. By, by reducing the, the distance, we've now gone from 200 feet to around 120 feet, which goes from eight or nine cars down to four or five cars stopped. That's, that's what we call the traffic queue waiting to make the movement from Elm onto Weed. What, what happens as the traffic queue gets better or further back, two things happen. People, people are waiting longer because you have a single lane approach and it, it eliminates the opportunity that currently exists for a vehicle to make a right turn bypassing the car sitting on Elm Street waiting to make a left turn. So as it backs up, the road gets narrower, the queue gets longer, and the, the level of frustration gets, gets worse and worse. So we, we see that as a real issue and a potential safety issue because people get frustrated. They begin to take chances, and we, we think there's ways of dealing with it. One of the ways that we, we work with the consultant, the traffic consultant, was we said, what if things break down at the driveway on Elm Street and the site drive to the, the project, which, which only has one site drive, whether it's an emergency apparatus getting in to fight a fire or an ambulance or an accident at the driveway. Once that gets shut down, there's, there's truly no alternative means of access or regress from this proposed development. We suggested that they look at the possibility of creating an emergency access regress from the site onto Weed Street in the general vicinity of this existing driveway from the property onto Weed. We also believe that in order to mitigate the possibility or the probability that the intersection operations at Elm Street and Weed Street are going to deteriorate. That, that's generally agreed during the applicant's preparation of their traffic study and my independent review. We can fairly conclusively say it's going to get worse there. Could they, the applicant, consider an entrance exit onto Weed Street in the general vicinity of where the existing driveway is? And I know that there's general opposition to this development. As I said, I, I don't advocate or oppose it. My, my role here is to make sure that we're looking at every single opportunity. The proposal to evaluate the possibility of another drive, while the traffic is still being generated and still being dispersed onto the, the street, it's no longer mixing with the existing traffic at the intersection of Weed Street and Elm Street. It's now being shifted to a private driveway, so any delay for drivers leaving the site is going to take place on the developer's property rather than on a public street. So there's some benefits to, to doing an alternative access, and you're going to hear a bit more on emergency access from Andrew, who's going to speak next about this. My, my role, as I say, was to look at the traffic impacts. I, I think that, to conclude, it's bad now. We agree, both the applicant's engineer and myself, that with the projection of traffic from this development, even with credits for people walking through the railway station, levels of service are going to deteriorate, and you have a potential for unsafe conditions existing at this intersection. That's a summary. I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions first from the commission and then.
Well, Mr. Thompson, the way we're going to do it, the way we do our peer reviews is we'll, you'll take questions from the commissioners and Attorney Hollister, will they have the opportunity to ask you questions? And then later on, if the public has any comment on your testimony, then they'll have the opportunity to comment on your testimony at that point. Okay, commissioners.
My question is related to, this is a commissioner angle. My question is related to the timing of the traffic study. I believe you said it was November 2021, and I'd like to know whether that was a normal time. Meaning, it occurs to me that was at a normal time for a normal level of school buses to be running. It occurs to me that we potentially had hybrid school going. And we also are a couple hundred yards away from a lumberyard parking lot that is generally empty and was empty in November 2021, and I wondered whether that has an impact on your peer review of the validity of that traffic study.
The traffic study that I referenced from solely, the date of submission, the date that it was filed was November 15, 2021. If that was the date of the traffic counts of the site observations, I would say it would be fairly representative. School was in session. Businesses were generally in session. Hybrid education notwithstanding, the counts that were taken earlier in support of the study, I'm just looking for the date.
But our parking lot is 10% full of, versus normal periods of time. The commuting levels of Metro North are 10% of what they were during normal times. So I'm just wondering what, how much does that have, that parking lot, those 500 missing cars or 360 missing cars? What impact does that have on the traffic stuff?
In 2021, I would say pretty significant. However, they indicated that they also had traffic data from 2016, which would be pre-pandemic, and schools were back in session, school, business activity was normal. So they've, they've said that, yes.
Okay.
So they, they have indicated they used the 2016 as a starting point for the numbers, which were lower than the, the 2021 counts that they did. I found that to be reasonable. I found that they're moving forward. Their annual growth rate to bring it to the current year also reasonable. I did find that they projected traffic for the opening of this facility to occur in 2022. And that, as, as we sit here in July, probably is not going to happen. So I asked them to adjust their volumes further to 2024, which, which in my opinion would be more likely date when this facility, if, if it was approved, constructed and open for occupancy would be a more reasonable date.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question.
Please.
Sir, you mentioned public safety a couple of times directly on the line, and I think of all the things we focus on in the commission, that's, you know, public safety is pretty, pretty high up there, life and limb. And I, I don't know what it is for other people, but I go through the intersection all the time. It's how I came to this meeting today, coming through this intersection, and I always thought it was a tough intersection, and you say it's now a D. So I guess, E, okay, it's even worse. It's even worse than I thought, which is pretty bad, and moving it to an F strikes me as particularly worrisome. I'm wondering, as a solution to some of these issues, whether perhaps it would be a, a matter for the town to decide to condemn part of this property and put a right turn lane in. So the footprint of the subject property would be smaller. It'll lose that nice stone wall, but that may be going anyway. If this passes, I don't know whether it will or not, but that way you have a right and left turn lane might ease things. It would shrink the size of the subject property, but might be a way to address that with an, perhaps an entrance that you suggest. Now, there may be other aspects pro or con to that decision, but I'm just wondering from purely traffic perspective, whether this is something.
Okay. As a starting point, while I talk about level of service as the primary measure of how traffic engineers evaluate operations, public safety is certainly a concern. I, I have a hard time, and I think any traffic engineer would ever stand before you and say, there's a direct linkage between a deterioration level of service and, and safety. The, the correlation, if there is one, is that driver frustration begins to worsen, they begin to take chances. We did look at public safety. The applicant did do a, a proper evaluation of accidents that occurred at the intersection. I did talk to Deputy Chief De Federico to talk about the safest intersection. I don't, and, and he can certainly speak for himself on it, but the general understanding is it's a tough intersection, carries a lot of traffic, some of it at reasonably high speeds, but it's not unsafe. The four accidents by themselves do not make this unsafe. I think people have become accustomed to the, the speed of traffic on Weed. I think, you know, to the betterment of everybody, they exhibit caution when they move through the intersection with the flashing beacon now for the vision slows down traffic. So does not, I, I, I can't stand here and say to you, it's an unsafe intersection. I see the potential for it to get worse as time goes on if we don't take measures to, to make sure that the level of service doesn't continue to deteriorate.
I hear you, sir. I mean, I've been in this town over 30 years, and I've been driving that intersection a lot. And people get frustrated in the left turns because people move very fast on Weed Street, even though I'm coming south on Weed and turning into Elm, and I don't have a stop sign, so I have the right of way technically. The other cars often don't think that way, and they try to jump in front, and I've had a couple near misses. So I'm, my own experience admittedly, it's a voice, but I, I found it to be one of the toughest intersections in town and one you have to be, as you suggest, extremely careful. And I think I do, at least I try to be, and I would hope other people too, but still, I mean, it, it worries me about public safety on this issue, particularly with more cars and those potentially cars entering the intersection or entering very close to that intersection. Just maybe initiative.
I, I suspect if you asked everybody in this room, if they've gone through the intersections, their assessment would be no different than yours. It's a difficult intersection. You, even when you have the right of way, as, as you indicated, coming south on, on Weed, making the left turn into Elm, you have the right of way. But you got people making the right turn from Weed northbound. You got people making a left turn coming out of Elm Street. So there's, there's a lot of things going on there, and part of what I asked for was, can we do something? Can we, as a traffic engineer, implement some kind of measures? And I don't know what the, the right measure is. As I say, it's not my role to tell them, do this or do that. I suggest different things. Widening of Elm Street, a multiway stop, additional flashing beacons, a full traffic control signal. There's a myriad of strategies that are out there that just haven't been looked at. And I think if, if. And I think if if this project is to move forward, it's incumbent on the applicant to answer those questions. Can something be done?
Thank you, sir.
So James Dash, just for the record, it was in our last meeting that Mr. Solis said that there was no correlation at all, or there was no um potential impact from an increase in traffic congestion on public safety. There's in fact actually numerous studies that point to at least a strong positive correlation between traffic congestion and public safety. So you mentioned, sir, that um this is a difficult intersection. What about it makes it difficult?
Excuse me?
You mentioned, sir, that this was a difficult intersection, we didn't know. What about it makes it difficult?
You you have high speeds on Weed Street.
Correct, yeah.
You have limited sightline for vehicles leaving Elm Street, making a left turn or right turn. The wall creates a a sightline impediment, and the, looking to the left, you have a hill that, uh, I'm sorry, loo- looking south on on Weed Street, you also have north coming vehicles that are traveling at a fairly high rate of speed. Everybody doesn't indicate that they're making a right turn. I mean, I I've watched it, and and quite honestly, I I think the right turn is the easiest movement at the intersection because it, the only conflict it has is with the left turning vehicle coming from Weed Street southbound. There's, there's a number of conflicts there. Uh, the introducing the pedestrian flashing beacon is an advisory device. It's not a regulatory device that says stop. It says yield to pedestrians when when flashing. So it it's not, and and the the deputy chief can speak to his understanding of the enforceability of of this, but it's an advisory device. It's not a regulatory, if it flashes red, that you have to stop. You're supposed to yield, which is, is quite honestly even a stronger measure than stopping, yielding to pedestrians.
So would you say that that intersection, even as it as it is, forget about this this uh application going through and what that's going to mean in terms of the level of service and potential public safety issues with that intersection? Just looking at it is as it is, we didn't know. Would you say that there is a higher relative propensity for accidents that at that intersection than most?
There's a, there's a potential. Every intersection, every place where there's contract, uh, conflict between vehicles, there's a potential for accidents. This this intersection historically has not demonstrated a high accident rate. That's not to say that it's any better. I think the the low accident rate is because drivers exhibit unusual care at this intersection just because of the familiarity with all the things that are going on.
So you mentioned high speeds from people coming uh down Weed Street, headed to that intersection, they obviously could go past that intersection in poor sightlines, that especially affects people that are going to be taking a left from Elm Street onto Weed.
That's correct.
With that?
Yes.
So would you say that, just given the context of the specific situation, high, very high speeds on weed at time, and especially concerning taking a left, given the poor sightlines from Elm onto Weed, that there's legitimate concern for public safety?
The 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 delay for vehicles making the left turn from Elm Street onto Weed Street southbound is the most difficult maneuver at that intersection. It has the longest delay time because it's competing with every other movement that's at occurring at that intersection. So it has a potential, but it has not historically demonstrated it. I, if I could forecast the future, um, let me assure you, the last thing I would be doing is standing here tonight.
Does it have greater, does it have greater than the same or less potential with this, if this application goes through?
I I think because of the increase in potential delay, that the the safety factor, and and while uh the applicant was correct, there's no direct correlation, or no studies that show it. I believe that there's a frustration level based on my observations over the past forty years at intersections of stop sign control, the frustration does play into it and adds to the potential.
Okay, so it adds to it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Thompson, this is Mr. Castman. I have a question with respect to the actual construction of the traffic survey. I did ask this question at the last meeting. Just south of the intersection of Weed and Elm is the intersection of Frog Town um road with Weed. That is already a very difficult intersection. I guess the question I would ask you is, would it be customary in the design parameters for one of these traffic surveys to go to the, a nearby intersection like that one, or is that just too far away in the rubric of traffic studies?
I think Frog Town and Weed Street is at the the limits of what would be considered uh necessary for study. The volumes, because they they distributed fifty percent northbound on, I'm sorry, ten percent northbound on on Weed from Elm and forty percent southbound. So the number of vehicles leaving the site, going through that intersection, become very low and would have very little impact, in my opinion, on that. We did ask for a additional study to the west. I'm sorry, to the east on on Elm Street, because that had a potential for a greater traffic impact resulting from this development. But I think Frog Town and Weed is is probably not going to change in the way it operates.
Thank you.
And follow up question, I I compliment um Castman for bringing up this topic of nearby intersections. I'd like to extend it to Richmond Hill. And speaking personally, um, often I will take Richmond Hill off of Weed and then maybe get into town that way, uh, including the other, um, other shopping areas because that way I avoid this tough intersection with traffic and so forth. And I think Richmond Hill is another very challenging intersection, um, especially if you're coming out of Richmond Hill, either going south or north on Weed. Sightlines aren't aren't great. You have a a hill, you got curving streets. Uh, the um Richmond Hill is not the widest street we have in 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 town. And, you know, with um holders, rocks, plants, and everything else, you really can't see much. And so when when I'm driving it and I'm heading west on Richmond Hill at the intersection, you know, I stop at the stop sign, I kind of creep forward slowly so I can see where I'm going. And I I move, I move fast if I'm turning right because people come up Weed Street pretty fast. And if you slow down, you're going to get T-boned, which is not on my agenda, I will say. And so I just wonder that if if you have a already difficult intersection that perhaps is becoming more difficult. You have traffic diversion. You say, well, I'm going to take that route, it's too crowded, I'm going to go here. It's going to be on Richmond Hill, which is already a tough street. It's narrow, it's hilly. Uh, there's no sidewalk, you have people, baby carriages on it. You have tough sightlines, and it may exacerbate an already challenging situation elsewhere in town. You know, um, things move around, you know, it's the conservation of energy. It doesn't go here, it goes there. And so I I think maybe a broader study of perhaps perhaps diversion of traffic, voluntary diversion of traffic, may be worthwhile in order to help ensure public safety. My thought, I'd be grateful for any thoughts you have, sir.
A- as I said, my my role was to review the traffic study that solely prepared. I I could have a lot of ideas, a lot of thoughts about a a lot of things that should be looked at, and and yours certainly sounds to be a reasonable one. If if it's something the commission feels is appropriate, it's certainly within my prerogative, as your peer reviewer, to convey that concern to the applicant's traffic engineer and see what their thoughts on it. I I I'm personally not familiar with it, so I'm hesitant to support your your request or deny it, um, but certainly could be discussed internally with staff. And if uh it's appropriate, it'll be passed on to their traffic engineer.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly.
Got a question. Um, you, the uh level of service F. Um, could you go into a little more detail about what that really means? It's um roughly sixty seconds that uh people will be uh backed up waiting. Uh, it's, it's actually, uh, that's an average, right?
That's right.
And these are Fruein's uh calculations or uh hi- his uh chart that he came up with. Um, what's the maximum? I mean, sixty seconds is average. How bad can it really be?
Level of service F can be minutes.
It's, it's, it's gridlock.
That's.
Okay.
There's, there's no.
Right, there's no measure, there's no measure for it.
There's no upper limit to it, so you're exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Everybody good? Okay, Attorney Hollister, do you have any questions? Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Kingsbury will um comment from an operational and fire safety review perspective.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, New Canaan Department Heads, Staff, and the public. Um, I am Andy Kingsbury. I am the peer reviewer for the uh for this project hired by the town of uh New Canaan. A little bit about my background. I'm the former fire chief for the town of Westport. I spent a little over thirty years in Westport. Um, I was also the emergency management director for for the town of Westport. Uh, upon my retirement, I was asked to be the fire chief in my uh fire district in Trumbull. So I was the fire uh chief in the Nichols Fire District in Trumbull for four years. Uh, and in two thousand nineteen, I was uh hired by the the town of Trumbull uh as a part-time uh deputy emergency management director, and I still am the uh deputy emergency management director for the town of Trumbull. Um, I'm the chairman, the chief's chair for the uh Fairfield County Hazmat Team. Uh, I sit on the DEMIS, which is the, it was a big acronym for you, Department Emergency Management Homeland Security Regional Emergency Planning Team. Um, and I serve as the chair for what is referred to as ESF seven. That's Emergency Service Function Number Seven, Logistics and Resource Management. And so why do I tell you all about the emergency management resource typing? Uh, because part of my job is to know what's available, is resources and assets uh for this region and actually across the state of Connecticut. I'm also an adjunct instructor for the Connecticut Fire Academy. And I, uh, my specialty is a officer programs and uh technical rescue. I uh also am one of the leads for the building construction program for the state of Connecticut. So as requested, I've uh completed a operational and fire safety peer review on this project. Like Mr. Thompson, I look at it uh very objectively for what's good and um where there can be improvements and recommendations uh on the project, which I have done and submitted in my report. The uh fire marshal is here. Um, if there's some specific code compliance uh issues, um, they can be addressed to the uh fire marshal. So I think we all have a pretty good understanding of the project description, so I won't give you the the full description that's in my report. But maybe I could just summarize that. It's a uh hundred and two unit U-shaped building. So it's a si- a single, single building, four levels, or four floors of it are residential units. And the fifth um level is a garage level. Uh, it'll have that in that garage level, it'll be parking, and I'll be underneath the residential units. There will also be uh mechanicals down there. There'll be refuse and uh trash and storage. Building height is approximately fifty feet. Uh, construction type was not specified in the plans, but the architect, Mr. Eisen, did indicate that it would be a podium-style building. So he he explained that why I was here, but it might be worthwhile for me just to summarize. A podium-type uh building is fairly popular today. The uh parking garage, it'll be a fire-resistant, probably a concrete structure, where the cars will be parked underneath the residential units. Then the four stories above that, uh, he indicated would be type five, uh, which is wood frame, so it'd be stick-built above the parking garage, which would be uh fire-resistant. So that's just kind of a summary of the construction type. So I'll go through my report um each section at a time. And the first section that I always look at, um, anytime I look at a project, whether it um was be as a fire chief or doing these peer reviews is access, because that's very important. So access to fire apparatus in emergency vehicles. So I also include, uh, when we think about that, yeah, we always think about the uh the large fire truck, the ladder truck, but also ambulances, police cars, um, and like. So typically for fire department access, we'd be um, or we, the uh New Canaan Fire Department would be responding from um really right across the street here, and it's about seven tenths of a mile to the project. And a pretty good response time of about two to three minutes to get to the project. For additional resources, New Canaan has what's referred to as a box alarm system, so they have a very concise, very well-spelled-out system when they need help. That second alarm would get resources from Norwalk, Wilton, and the Westport Fire Department. Um, and those response times, of course, um, would vary by, you know, time of day congestion, even time of or day of the week. A third alarm, uh, you get additional assets. They would be coming in from Vista, New York, Stanford, and the Darien Fire Department. So it gives you kind of an idea of of uh where the assets would be coming in. For the site, so access to the site um is via that single uh access road. It's a curved driveway that's located off of Elm, which we've very discussed. And it's situated about a hundred and eighty feet. I think there's a little discrepancy on exactly how far. About a hundred and eighty feet east of the intersection of Weed and Elm. And the the single access driveway is proposed to be twenty-four feet in width, and it negotiates around the east side of the building or in around the parking areas. The gradient slope, so I refer to gradient slope, um, and the approach to this, I I'm talking about, are we going to have issues when we pull in? Is is the front bumper of the apparatus going to hit on a fire truck? Or is the rear of the uh truck going to drag? And appears that um it won't be an issue um as far as gradient slope getting into the project. Next, we looked at the, what we refer to as either uh turning maneuvers or um engineer, the engine firm, Sol, I did what, um, they have figure six is truck turning uh figures. And um that, looking at that and analyzing that very closely, um, that we feel that I feel will be very problematic for particularly the larger fire apparatus. Um, although solely engineering in uh April ninth submission did ease the entrance into there because it was very, very tight. Um, they eased the entrance, uh, if the fire apparatus responding from the east from here. Um, still, the apparatus would have to pull all the way to the left to pull in uh against oncoming traffic. And then they would um have to swing into the complex through the single driveway. There is a um southern New England telephone pole, a utility pole, right across the street from the uh entrance. New Canaan's aerial has uh about a twelve or twelve-plus foot overhang on the back of the aerial. So um having driven a aerial apparatus during my career for a a number of years, one of the things you have to be very careful is is that overhang. So when you take a sharp turn, that rear end is going to want to swing out. So you have to worry about things like signs, telephone poles, and and not hitting those. So it's it's just a factor that pulling in and where that location, that driveway is just complicates it um even more. Once into the complex, if you had looked at the turning maneuver and the figures, and I think most of us have, figure seven, you can see that the uh fire apparatus is going to have to be up against the curb in several spots, actually of a lot of spots in the complex. So as they negotiate in and they want to turn into that lobby area, that front area, they're going to be right up against the curbs. Um, so that is an issue. One of the, the big issues with that is that New Canaan's aerial ladder has outriggers. So the outriggers come out of the side of the aerial apparatus to su- support the aerial apparatus. And they have to um be fully deployed to to put that ladder up. So Chief Bassett uh measured, measured that for me. I've been working with uh Seagrave to get some of the specs on the vehicle. And uh that spread is about eighteen feet. So we have a very curved driveway, twenty-four feet in width. And um to get that maneuvered so that we can actually deploy that aerial um to put fight firefighting, rescue operations, or or what have it, would be very, very difficult in the complex as it is designed um today. When we look at the mutual aid partners, so we talked about that second alarm you're getting, the uh Norwalk Fire Department and the Westport Fire Department responding in, they have um aerial apparatus are going to be even more demanding. So the turning figures on some of those are even larger. So they would have, they would be probably having to back up um to to get into the complex. So the recommendation, okay, and and as uh Mr. Thompson said, I I'm not here to to tell the applicant how to how to do this, but just recommendations in general, um, because I think that's what we we want to do is give recommendations, is the applicant needs to widen um and or configure, reconfigure the driveway and the parking areas. The access road must be wider and have. The access road must be wider and have um relaxed turning radiuses to allow for that firefighting access. And also that firefighting operation. Uh, curving at the entrances, at the turns, um at the corners of the islands should be of what we refer to as mountable design. And that's a uh not a full curve or a square curve, that's a tapered curve. So that the uh fire apparatus or vehicles can uh mount that curb if they need to, suppose a car stops. Um, they have no other way to get around, they can go up on this mountable curve. So and I think that's a standard, pretty standard practice for architects these days. Uh, a closer view of the, when we look at this truck turning figures. If we put a hose line across this driveway, okay, so the hydrants are are out in the street. There um, there's one, actually there's two on the corner of Weed and Elm, one of them directly across from each other, and there's one farther down on uh Elm Street. If we have to deploy a hose line through that driveway. Um, Chief Bassett, not not your head of, is it five inch or four inch supply line, you have five inch. So very common, the uh the region is kind of standardized on five inch, there's a few hole belts, I think Wilton has four inch. That um you cannot dry fire apparatus over five inch holes, you you just, you can't do it. Um, you really can't put ramps out, there's no way around it, so so just imagine if we put this hose line now. Into this curving driveway that's twenty-four uh feet wide, it makes it very, very difficult. So I do I do have some recommendations, and actually the first one is that the applicant, really the simple thing to do is just add a second access road. Um, to take care of this uh congestion, potentially clogging it up and blocking uh egress uh into the building and exiting also. Uh Elm Street needs to be clearly marked, no parking and needs to have signage. So I've been told, um and maybe uh the Deputy Chief of the Police Department can confirm it. And I don't think people are parking on Elm Street in that vicinity, but I didn't see any park, no parking signs, and I drove that and Googled that, Google drove it many times. So if you park a car anywhere in the vicinity of that driveway, you're gonna have issues. So um I would make a contingent on on this project on Elm Street to make that uh no parking zone, sign it. And also paint the curves on it. Another thing that's of um concern is is storms, we uh have some winter storms here um that this project is maintained. So we heard uh uh Mr. Dandria, um one of the uh engineers talk about. Snow storage areas, that's very important and plowing it. Um, if we are already very tight with maneuvering through this project, if we have a harsh winter, um that's gonna become problematic. If it freezes, we start having some snowshells. Parcel, delivery trucks, FedEx, food delivery trucks. Um, I don't know about everyone in the room, but I think the FedEx truck is at my house in the Amazon once a day about. Um, I did find a study back in two thousand sixteen that said that apartment complexes were experiencing one point five deliveries a week. Uh, that was eight years ago in pre-COVID, and they predicted a fifteen percent growth. Um, I did look to try to find some more recent studies, and I really wish I could could share those with everybody, but I haven't found any studies. Um, what the parcel delivery, um what the food delivery. Um, the frequency of that is, but if you just do the simple math, a hundred and two units, one point five times a week. And divide that by seven days, it's twenty-something deliveries um a day into there. And again, that's not inclu- including growth and and post-COVID. So um I think it'd be probably much higher, but I don't have any any uh studies to to cite on that. Uh, moving vans, refuse, maintenance workers, um the refuse was addressed by the uh applicant. Uh, people moving in, people just generally stopping are are gonna congest that driveway, particularly concerned about the the front of that that building. So the recommendation is the applicant should designate uh loading zones and indicate a plan for snow removal and snow staging. Okay, we can't just pile that up, that snow up up against the building, and then now we're impeding access for the firefighters to maybe get a hose line. Or get around the building, so that has to be carefully thought out. Uh, second recommendation is is no parking zones and fire lanes, and they should be, again, clearly marked with signage. And uh in the complex, the pavement should be labeled. We looked at the um the landscaping plan. Um, and there's a, there's, there's a lot of landscaping in there. From our aspect, I would always fight with the tree warden, I was not popular with the tree warden, because every time. On in Westport or along Route one, when they would wanna put trees to make it green, I would oppose putting trees up. And uh because I'm looking at it from the public safety aspect, we need to be able to access that building. Are we gonna have trees that over time are gonna grow and impede access? If we put them on the islands on the corners, are they gonna grow tall? And then uh Chief Bass is gonna have his aerial uh go through here and be pruning the trees for him, and I could tell you, those aerials come back all the time. With all kinds of greenery struck on, stuck on the front of them. So a recommendation would be to um label those fire lanes, no parking zones. Um, and then look at the canopies when they're mature, if there ain't light poles, is there any uh signage that's gonna be in the way of uh. The the bigger vehicles moving throughout the complex. Move on to access for exterior firefighting operations, this is exterior and staging. So I'd already spoken about the New Canaan's aerial ladder and the other aerial ladders and deploying their uh their outriggers to be able to operate. Um, the lobby in the canopy area, when I look at the architect's plans, they're indicating a lobby with an overhang. Uh, very hard to measure that, but it appears that it's it's under thirteen feet, and if I'm measuring it right, somewhere between eleven and twelve feet. So that canopy uh potentially can obstruct. Vehicles, it can obstruct um being able to set up that aerial ladder to access parts of the building. Um, needs to make sure that we comply with the um International Fire Code, and it kinda gets a fire code on heights on that. I could not tell if there was uh, it looked at one of the drawings that there were some pillars in the way. Uh, that needs to be free and open, and if you look at the turning maneuvers, uh figure seven by solely engineering, you'll see that they're showing. The aerial apparatus and the apparatus going in front of that canopy, but I'm not quite sure what the overhang is, so uh. I would recommend that the uh archi- the applicant get together with the architect and uh look at that that closely. Um, really, since it's a U-shaped building, ideally, that's a a place to set up that aerial ladder. And you wanna get that aerial ladder in that area there, so we can have what's referred to as the biggest scrub aerial, scrub area for the uh apparatus. And uh that's firefighting term, but essentially what the scrub area is, is gonna position that aerial ladder so that it can reach the most amount of ejectives. Right, so if we put it in the corner, put it in the corner, we can swing it up, we can hit all levels of the apartment in the greatest area in the swing there. Okay, so that's very important to that front area of the buildings uh free and clear. That we're not gonna have people parked in front of there, we're not gonna have um the Uber truck out there, Amazon, um people. Just visiting and dropping their cars off, so um. My recommendation is that uh the applicant work on that fire department access road, making making sure that um it is free and clear. Also, the they should consult with the New Canaan uh Fire Department and make sure that the access roads can um hold the vehicles. And more importantly, that the access road can hold this, the weight of the outriggers from the aerials, including the sidewalks. Okay, so that when those end, those outriggers go out, we make sure we're putting it down on a solid surface, because we don't wanna be, we don't wanna tip over an aerial. Uh, gradient slope, a- as we refer to uh gradient slope around the uh the site. Yeah, for firefighting operations, for exterior firefighting operations, seems to be fairly level, acceptable. Uh, we visited the site, it's not a hilly site, sometimes you you run into hilly sites and it's di- difficult. Uh, I would just comment, and I'm gonna recommend that a uh a maintenance plan uh for. Removing s- uh snow, making sure that that area is clear, shrubbery, making sure that uh things don't get overground, get overgrown. Around the perimeter of the building for firefighting operations is addressed. Uh, staging, so when we have a fire. You heard me refer to the uh box alarm system and what New Canaan can get and does get uh from the surrounding towns, but also. Um, outline that you're you're gonna be getting a a large police response, EMS response, and maybe others that are gonna be responding in there. So we have to think about access to this, and we have to think about the ambulances. So if we have uh someone hurt that needs to be transported from that building, oh god forbid, some someone gets hurt or a firefighter gets hurt. We can't trap those ambulances in the complex, and we have to be able to get in and out of there. So all the things I mentioned previously with the tight driveways, uh hose lines. Um, really, the solution to this is a secondary access road. And a place to stage the uh the vehicles in there, so the uh a recommendation is applicant should provide a secondary means of. Access for uh fire apparatus, ambulances and police cars. Always look at building construction type, I I spoke about that briefly. Um, it was not covered, and and it's only preliminary design stages here with the architect, I understand that. Uh, but he did explain that it'd be a podium-style building. My recommendation is those above that fire-resistant garage area, that that be non-combustible construction. So the way that the uh types go is um type one fire-resistant, which the garage was indicated to be made of, and I think code will require that. Is uh, that's the most fire-resistant, and it goes from one, two, three, four, down to five, five is the least fire-resistant. So I would recommend a uh non-combustible, just you don't want the structure burning, it's one less thing to 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 burn. So one less thing for the fire department and the chief to have to worry about. Garage area and indoor parking, um it's located in one of those four levels of apartments. Um, I got a little insight from the, from the architect saying that it's gonna be half above grade or a little more than half above grade with open gratings. My concern is vehicles create a tremendous amount of smoke, and it's toxic toxic smoke these days. Uh, think about a car inherently, it's designed what, to keep rain out? So if we have, we're gonna have a sprinkler system in there, but the car has a hood, it has a roof. So um a lot of smoke's gonna get generated, I I worry about that uh immensely. I would recommend, and I don't know what the code's gonna say on this, uh particularly says since the architect said it's gonna be above grade, or at least fifty percent above grade. But a mechanical ventilation system, I I feel would be very important and recommended. You know, you could just imagine having to to fight a fire, there's two stairwells that descend down into the parking area there. And if we hook up to the stand pipes, and now we, we're gonna have to prop open the doors to the stairwells to fight the fire, so where's that smoke gonna go? Up into the stairwells, and you've all seen those pictures of people with soot on their face, so we try everything, we talk about stairwells and uh. Uh, egress is is to avoid that. Uh, the other way to attack it would be from, you know, the ends of the parking garages, which uh might be a better way to uh attack it. And the reason, only reason why I mention that is I'm gonna suggest that some fire hydrants be put on a looped main inside the complex, just for that reason. But a a mechanical ventilation system and a class uh one stand pipe system would would be recommended. You also have the uh trash chute and uh trash storage down there, so it's not uncommon for um fires to. Um, start in these trash chutes, someone throws away something, and just imagine a cigarette, and and it goes on into the trash chute and catches fire. So a lot of opportunities for a fire to occur um in that area, in that parking garage area. Uh, fire protection features, again, aren't really indicated, the um. Fire code will will dictate a lot of that, uh my recommendation though is that the uh they work with the. The Fire Marshal, the Fire Chief on locating things like access boxes, we call them Knox boxes with keys. Um, where the stand pipes are gonna be, how they're gonna be configured, the chief may have a a a better idea on where the locations of those go. Where's the fire permit connection, so where's that connection? Where the fire pumper pumps into that sprinkle and stand pipe system is gonna be a. On the corners, is it gonna be multiple ones, is it gonna be out by the street where the fire hydrants are? So I would um just ask that, and that's my recommendation, that uh the applicant work with the the Fire Marshal and the Fire Chief on that. Us, move on to stairwells and interior access. We did have a little bit of a dialogue about this, and the uh architect uh talked about the location of those and potentially moving those in his testimony. Uh, you must understand it, so there's two stairwells are gonna be required uh for this type occupancy. Um, they have to be, you arrange them in a certain way, so you wanna rearrange them so they're remote from each other? Okay, so they both don't get compromised, makes sense, right? Um, and we, but the problem sometimes with with doing that, and this is a very large building with only two. Um, stairwells that are located contowards the ends and not near the lobby is um. The fire department goes into the lobby, the final location of a fire, they go up that stairwell to fight that fire, hook up to the stand pipe. With their fire hoses that are in the, in the stairwells, but now we're fighting people trying to exit. Okay, so we always try to designate, it's one of the first tactics that we we teach um in the fire officer program. And as well documented is that we have separate uh fire attack, okay, and separate uh evacuation stairwells. My fear is that these are so remote, and and put yourself just as a panicking person, you run into the fire farmer, you're gonna say, oh. They're gonna fight the fire, I'm gonna run all around the building, go down the other stairwell. Um, so I I just think from a practical standpoint, if they can either add a third stairwell, or the architect can uh. Work with the the Fire Chief on the location of these stairwells. To to move them, get them closer to the lobbies, that would be uh very helpful, so that would be, again, my recommendation is to uh. Less travel distance between these stairwells, they relocate them, and really ultimately, just the solution is to to get a third stairwell in there, maybe near that that lobby area. Be very, very helpful. Uh, loop mains, so firefighting one-on-one is when we. Hook up to a hydro, a fire hydrant, and then we pump a sprinkler system or a stand pipe system, that's the hose lines that the firefighters drag into the building. From a connection in the stairwell is, is we don't wanna hook up to hydrant and rob. Um, the water that's going to a fire pump, we're supplying those, so I don't know if that makes any sense, but we don't wanna do is um hook up to that same. Main, particularly if it's a dead-end main, and hook that pumper up to there, so let me see if I can hopefully give a, give a little bit of a example here. You have um a ki- a fire department connection on the building, and we've got a uh fire hydrant. Out on uh Elm, but we get a a car fire in the parking lot or in the parking garage, so now we we go ahead and we hook up. To a hydrant that's in the complex, and what we start doing is we start drawing that water away from the fire pump. And the sprinkler system and the stand pipe. Um, so, so really simple solution, obviously it has, I'm say it's simple, it has to be engineered. And you have to work with aquarium water on this, is to put a looped main system uh in the building. So have a water main that goes around the building and connect somewhere I would think on Weed Street. So this way it's cross-fed, you can have firefighting operations inside the complex, that's not gonna uh compromise the water supply going into the sprinkler system. And the fire pump uh for for the firefighters in there, so that's a another recommendation. Uh, something I need to to talk about, because um, you know, uh as a Fire Chief and uh a fire officer. Is is New Canaan's Fire Department operational capability, they have six firefighters on duty, they're supplemented um with volunteers. They have unqualified firefighters, uh but there's only so much that these initial six firefighters can do, and a very difficult so. Um, thing would be for them have to choose between, am I gonna fight a fire? Or am I gonna rescue people? Because six firefighters um cannot do both of those operations at once. Yes, the chief will have mutual aid coming in, the the Wiltons, the Westports, the New Canaans, the Arians are reaching out farther, but that takes takes time. So um I think it's pertinent for me to just to point that out, that uh with six firefighters on duty. Depending on our volunteer, probably a fire right now, I I can guess the chief will get a lot more volunteers in here and to be in better shape, but um. You just think about a ten o'clock on a Tuesday, is the chief gonna have a lot of help immediately um to help him fight that fire in this complex? If you just think of, think about that. Having to hook up to a stand pipe system, having to get that water supply established, having the firefighters find out where the fire is, stretching hose. Evacuating people, six firefighters can't do that, so again, I I point that out, just um as a Fire Chief, I need to point that out. That uh six firefighters really are not gonna be able to accomplish fighting with fire and rescuing uh people. So uh I'll quickly go through this, this is just the sum, this kind of bullet points, summary recommendations. Um, access to the site and building as uh proposed is is inadequate for fire apparatus and for fire suppression and fire. Operations, the applicant needs to widen and reconfigure that driveway area. Curving at the entrance, corners, islands uh should be mountable, so multiple curbs. Recommend a uh second fire apparatus access road due to potential of uh impairment and blockage, and I spoke about several of those. Elm Street should be clearly marked, no parking. The applicant should verify that the fire apparatus can negotiate that lobby, that canopy area. I was, I saw it referred to or spoke about as a courtyard area, and um fire lanes established in there. A loading zone should be established, again, Mr. Eisen did speak about that, but I I I don't know where, and I didn't see on the plans where that's designated. So a loading zone should be designated. Sidewalks and access roads should be uh designed to meet the load requirements of New Canaan's uh fire. Sidewalks and access roads should be designed to meet the load requirements of New Canons Fire Apparates. And specifically the aerial apparatus outriggers. And then a maintenance plan for vegetation control, snow removal, snow staging should be established and written. And then I would recommend a third stairwell to improve interior access, decrease that travel distance for both occupants and for firefighters. Engineer mechanical system, a class one stand pipe system. Recommend that additional fire hydrants be placed within the project as determined by the fire chief. And a new hydrant should be on a looped water main system. This really will provide a tactical advantage for the fire department. They're not have to worry about blocking that road, not have to worry about robbing the sprinkler system. We think about storms. This is my emergency management. Experience. We have hundred and two units, some of them are two bedroom. I don't know how many people we would have in this building. But uh, we have a storm, power goes out. Now what do we do with all those folks? We have to shelter them. So we have to put them up in a shelter, finds a place for them. We have a a fire in this building. A general area, we recommend this all the time, uh, generate the the building so that we can. Shelter people in place in the building during a storm. Okay. Now lastly, um, it seems kinda, I don't know, in the weeds here, but the applicants should ensure that a, at least one elevator. Is sized to accommodate an EMS stretcher in a fully reclined position. A lot of times that's not thought about. So if you get someone up on the third and fourth floor, our last thing we wanna be do is log him down in a stair chair. You know, down those flights of stairs. So that, those are my recommendations and I can be available for questions.
Questions for Mr. Kingsbury.
Yeah, uh, James Bash, um, so you mentioned Mr. Kingsbury that. This project is quote and it's preliminary design stages. So I'm curious from a, from a fire safety perspective, if. This project was gonna take place, be constructed in your town. Would you be comfortable with the level of safety implied in the current design?
So I always recommend it be non combustible, uh, but the fire code may allow for it to be type five. Wood frame above that parking area. So my recommendation always is, and sometimes it's it's a mere matter of working with the applicant. And um. I I did recommend a few projects where we actually end up being kinda cost effective to make it non combustible. In other words, the studs are are metal. So we're not worried about the walls burning. So that's my recommendation.
But you made a, you made a series of of excellent and common sense summaries uh, recommendations in your summary. So again, speaking from the perspective of US Fire Chief, if this application was constructed as is in your town. Can you walk us through what your safety concerns would be?
I would be concerned, well, first off is that is first and foremost would be the access to the building. It's very, very tight in here. If you can't get. Positioned properly, can't get into the complex, if you can't perform firefighting rescue operations, you know, that you're you're way behind to start with. So um, opening that up, putting a second access drive in there. Um, the height, you know, fifty feet. It's, it, I I looked at the reach of New Canons Ariel. And I looked at it from the parking areas, from uh, Elm, from Weed Street, and um, it's pretty decent. So I'm not that concerned about that. Uh, but I would be concerned about in the front of the building. Yeah, it really has to be opened up is what has to happen there. As far as the construction, you know, I would advocate, you heard me speak about ventilation systems. Um, I just been to a couple fires in underground parking or parking structures that it's just a lot of smokes and they're just terrible. If I'm answering your question, but specifically with the construction type is the more fire resistant it is, the the better from a firefighting aspect. So we we worry about, do we have a fire in in a, in the room? So we call it a contents fire. So we have a fire that's burning in an apartment, or do we have a structure fire where the fire is attacking the structure and we can, we have to worry about collapse. Okay, but sprinklers will go a long way to taking care of that, of course. So I don't, I hope that answers your question.
Uh, it did to some extent. I think you walked me through a little bit why you thought. This was preliminary. It's something, it's an application we actually are likely to vote on this month, even though as you say, it's in its preliminary preliminary design stages.
And it, I don't wanna put Paul on the spot, but uh, Fire Marshal Payne, will you'll be reviewing these plans correctly and it'll have to meet that fire code. So that's his bent, that's his standard, his benchmark.
Thank you.
Questions, Chairman, if I may, please. Wanna compliment you on your focus on public safety because. That the previous expert, public safety is is vital to to what we do. And appreciate the the level of detail on various aspects of public safety. I'm particularly grateful on the information on access and not just getting in, but maneuvering within the site. Cause you can't just get in, but you can get around because you find you got a problem here first and the problems over there. So you gotta pack up, move and. Pick up a lot of LDH and move it around and it's it's cumbersome and you need maneuverability as well as the physical access. Or ability of the equipment to operate safely. One of the questions I asked the last meeting. To the applicant was, well, you know, sometimes you have big fires where equipment's coming in from various towns. You know, can they fit too? Uh, they have different size equipment and so forth and. I'm finding hearing from you, sir, is that uh, they do have different size equipment. Some of it's pretty big and it may not be quite um. Maybe a little too big for for the design that that here. So um. Given at least me a good deal of uh, thought on on public safety issues and I just get a sense that. Some of the um, design issues we've heard so far have not really fully encompassed a number of fairly vital public safety. Concerns and that um, substantially. Marked. Substantial redesign may be necessary in order to alleviate. The threats to life and limb that you potentially highlighted for us. That's that's my take from some of your conversations, sir.
It's important that um, you consider, and again, New Can has a box form system, so it's spelled out that um. I I spoke about their operational capability with this, this, this six initial firefighters, but they're they're gonna need help from surrounding towns, but they have to consider. The uh, size of the apparatus. So um, I don't, I can find it for you here. Look, see what the curb to curb. Distances, I actually have it right here. It's uh, I think it's about forty three feet, forty three plus feet. For the um, apparatus to to swing so the body doesn't hit, the ladder doesn't hit anything. Um, we look at at Westport's, you know, that grows by almost two feet. And um, Knox truck would be similar. Uh, Wilton's truck is smaller, so Wilton's truck could could fit in here. Uh, better, but they have to consider, you know, where your help's coming from. And I started off. Talking about resource management, knowing what's gonna be coming in and then the design has to consider that. Uh, because again, New Canon only has six firefighters on duty.
I also appreciated your views on snow removal since we do have snow and. Kind of the snow during, they not only creates an emergency, but it happens during an emergency and you're trying to get in with a foot of snow on the ground and more coming down. Which I have to believe is probably not a lot of fun for firefighters. You're nodding your head, I guess you would have, capital challenging.
So so the general, I'm sorry, so the general rule with firefighting is um. If it's extremely hot or extremely cold, that we need fifty percent more manpower? That's a, so that's just a general um, fire officer's rule um, and in all the handbooks and what we teach. So uh, it's it's not a lot of fun, you know, dragging hose through snow. Obviously heat, you know, we all know about that, but also. Um, if if the roadways aren't cleared and parking lots aren't cleared, hydrants aren't shoveled out, that's problematic. So that's where I really want the applicant to come up with that plan.
Yes, because I think we discussed this in the last meeting and um. Some of the plans that memory serves were on the applicant for the pile of snow in different parts of the uh, parts of the site. Often off to the side, but it's it's someone else's door. It's their side for them and not the side for the neighbors. But that uh, again, having this here with potential melt and so forth can create. I would, I would think some challenging conditions and what I'm hearing from you, sir, is that. Uh, removal of the snow from the site in order to not have any of these obstructions on site would be an optimal solution to mine.
Removal or identifying that staging area where they can put it. I think there was a lot of discussion on the rain gardens and can we dump them there and. Dump them on the um, north side of the building, uh, but I would just be concerned about, are we looking at competing access? Are we blocking exits? You know, all those things. So really well defined plan needs to be um, designed for this.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. Uh, this is Dan Radman. I assume you um, review the solely engineering apparatus maneuvering plan for the site, correct? They used New Canon ladder number three as the typical for the analysis. It's by all means, it's a, it's a tight plan to make work. Um, the ladder coming in. Westbound on Elm Street is not only, it's not making a right turn into the site. It's making a one hundred eighty degree hairpin turn into the site and then another left to get into the site. And they've taken what looks to be certain liberties as to how the truck is gonna. Approach a curb or hit a curb or go over a curb to get into this site. Is this a viable plan? Does it work?
Well, my recommendation is is ease those radiuses. I know there's sightline issue. I understand why they did it for sightline issues. But they need to ease and widen that driveway. There, there was um, a revision on that and I don't know if you have the latest revision of April. Something. Where they did ease it. Uh, a little bit, but I would suggest that they ease that quite a bit more because as I spoke about, there's a telephone pole across the street from that. You're coming into oncoming traffic. So if they can even widen that out more so that the uh, entryway. Is uh, further east on on Elm Street or put a second access road in there would really. Help out also. And tactically for the, for the fire department, for the chief is is now we can have a fire apparatus. Go to the front of building, we could have an aerial ladder go around the side, take up a position, a predetermined position on the side or whatever the the chief determines. So those, those are, again, all my recommendations is that secondary access road and widening and relaxing of the the turns.
Thank you. Further technical question, again, reveal my ignorance, so so bear with me, but I'm looking at the the C shaped. Design of the building as proposed and particularly like to focus on the Garth or. The the courtyard that's open on one side, so it's enclosed on three sides. And I'm thinking that there are people living on the all three sides there. And you may have a fire where you need to have aerial access to to two sides. So you have to two aerials in there to to get people out from burning up. I'm wondering, is this, given the the design and and footprint and size, is that easily done? And also, if you need to move the apparatus afterwards, because when we solve that problem, now I'm gonna move around to the side of the building because there's a problem there. You gotta back up or I don't know how you do it, but is this a, this a challenge uh, from a public safety perspective?
It it is a challenge. Any any of these type of part or bigger buildings is the apparatus placement is very, very important. Um, we will have multiple aerial ladders in there. So I would think that um, you know, the incident commander would, the chief would be bringing in. Those outside resources and positioning them. Again, we need to accommodate them through either a secondary access road. A widening of uh, the driveway and reaction of the corners. But you know, once that aerial is in there and set up, it's it's very hard to move. There may be hose lines attached to it, hose lines in front and behind it. So kinda, once you're positioned, it's really gonna probably stay there without. Unless, you know, a lot, a lot of effort to to move that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Angle.
Mr. Kingsbury, last month I asked the question whether the building could be lowered. And it was explained to me that no, the, it is preferable that we have a natural ventilation system and that the building was gonna be higher. So that we could have natural, we could rely on a natural ventilation and we're gonna build up what to me felt sounded like a berm of earth. To sort of mask that elevation. And you said it is a mechanical ventilation system is important and recommended. So I was surprised to hear that a mechanical. It sounded to me when the applicant told me that a natural ventilation was preferred. And you're saying mechanical is preferred. So I wondered whether you could talk more about. The carbon monoxide, the dangers that you thought, and why is it that we can't go with a natural system?
So the the fire code will dictate um, when it needs to have those detection systems in it, the ventilation. When I wrote my report, and maybe I wasn't clear on this, when I wrote my report, I did not know, or I didn't, hadn't heard from the architect and. Said that it'll be opened up. Um, you couldn't tell from the the plans or at least from what I read, I could not see that there was openings in it. So uh, my understanding is that if it's over fifty percent open, that they won't need to have the ventilation system in there. And yeah, my concern is is having that mechanical system in there to to move every, the smoking. Carbon monoxide, you know, that's gonna be from a car running in there. That's not a good thing, but I I'm really worried and focused on, do we have car fires in there, trash fires that extend to cars or multiple cars that catch on fire? And regardless whether it's naturally ventilated, I would still recommend that we, it has a mechanical ventilation system in it. May not be required by code. But um, as a recommendation, I'm putting in my, my report, yes. If it was below ground, um, you know, the fire code would dictate what needs to be done.
Everybody good? Okay. Attorney Hollister, do you have any questions for Mr. King? Okay, great. Um, thank you, Mr. Kingsbury. Commissioners, before we open it up to the public, we we have our other town experts. Um, commissioners, any questions for police fire, anybody else who's attending tonight?
Are we gonna have the opportunity to talk, to ask questions of Maria Copple later or right now?
We should do that right now.
Okay, I have some questions.
Engineer Copple, please.
Hi.
Hey, James. Excuse me, Mr. Bash, let me just ask the planner, is it okay if engineer Copple sits there from a? Okay, great.
All right.
Don't worry about it.
So we we talked a little bit in the last meeting back in two thousand twenty one. We have capacity issues at the treatment facility during a couple of major storms. Can you talk about those two events a little bit more and what could be potentially leading to? Um, some of the capacity issues we have at the treatment facility um, during storm events. Which once seem to be directly related to the amount of sewer flow we have in the conveying system.
Understood. So the treatment plant itself is designed for one point seven million gallons per day. With a peak capacity of five point five million gallons per day. During those two storm events at the end of twenty twenty one that you're referring to, our treatment. Plant actually received seven million gallons per day. Um, really, I think it was a storm of September first, September second, that was the one that was most crucial. We were able to accommodate that because our um. Director or treatment plant manager, James Rogers, was able to anticipate that the storm was coming and he was able to make. Available clarifiers for storage. Um, so we didn't have any incident with that storm, but it was at. A million and a half gallons above what the peak. Design of the treatment plant was. The reason for those additional flows was because of the wet weather condition. And what's happening is even though we have separate storm sewer systems than we have from sanitary sewer systems. We do have aging infrastructure. Um, and we do have connections that were made to our sanitary sewer condition. Conveyance system that were made, you know, potentially anywhere from thirty, forty, fifty years ago. Um, and those are now considered illegal connections and what those would be referred to as inflow. Of storm water into our sanitary sewer that are illegal. Um, and then also infiltration and that would be through potential cracks. Um, or joint openings within our sanitary sewer system where high groundwater elevation. Would allow for water to come into our sanitary sewer system. So we have been aware of this condition for a while now, for a number of years, and that's how. Um, we've actually been able to employ this two hundred thousand plus dollar INI study that AECOM is performing. And what the goal of that study is to identify where some of the low hanging fruit is. To be able to um, implement mitigation measures, either lining of certain sewers. Um, repairing, um, disconnecting those illegal connections. Um, and identifying that. And that study, you know, started before any application came in and is still um, underway. Um, and we probably will start getting results back. And we probably will start getting results back in the early fall, we anticipate. At that point in time, what we anticipate to do is basically get closer to that five point five million gallon per day MGD that the plant is designed for, so that we don't have to have our, you know, Jim Rogers come and identify where we need to open up, draw down the system, so to speak, almost like before a storm event where you take a detention basin or a lake or a pond and you open up the dam and you let some waters out, not that we would ever let sewage out, but it's that same kind of correlation. So that's where we are, and that's kind of the understanding of why in those two storm events, we actually had more inflow into our treatment plant and how we are trying to mitigate that in the future.
But it's not something where we can, you know, take the necessary mitigation steps immediately. We're just, we're just in the research process right now. We're trying to figure out within the system where there's breakages, where there's INI.
That, so the town through AECOM has done their flow meters. And so, yes, that they're, they're going to identify to us where our next steps for mitigation would be.
Okay. So when you, when we think about as a commission, we have to at some point, you know, think about capacity issues if we're already enduring storms twice in two thousand twenty one, going beyond our peak design capacity. So we have to be thinking about the type of applications that come before us and what type of applications would be adding a lot more capacity on a relative basis versus others.
Understood, but just for an understanding of the comparison, twenty three thousand five hundred and fifty additional gallons and seven million is a third of a percent.
No doubt.
So, so the, the understanding is that what we're trying to do is be able to get closer back down to that five point five MGD. So we don't have to use human measures to, to, to be able to accommodate those flows. But that's why we're, we're addressing our influence infiltration.
But I don't think the right way to look at, I'm curious about your opinion, is necessarily the, the marginal amount of each gallons per day that we're adding to the sewer conveyance system. So if it's twenty three thousand gallons per day that's projected, this application would add to the sewer capacity system. It's not necessarily the marginal amount that I think we should pay so much attention to because we really don't know what is the straw that might break the camel's back, we have no idea. What we do know, I think it's probably reasonable to say, but again, watch your input, is that when you have higher density multifamily units that you're adding to this conveyance system, that's going to wind up at the treatment facility that's already beyond its peak design capacity, that you increase the risk. You increase the risk from that versus, let's say, a single family application.
So obviously, if it was a single family application that was coming in, that there would have been no change in proposed flows. As pertains to the conveyance system that you mentioned, there has been studies that were done that we requested the applicant to do flow test studies of the existing condition, the flow depths of the existing mains in an evaluation of their also proposed flows. And there is additional, based on those calculations, there's additional capacity in the conveyance system of at, at the, the minimum.
Not necessarily at the treatment facility during storms.
So, so during the treatment, during peak storms, the treatment plant in two instances last year, we did exceed our five point five, correct? The, to be able to say that there would be, have to be a bigger decision made by our town fathers to say that no increase in flows to our system could be made. And I think that that's a, a bigger issue because right now during dry weather conditions, there's sufficient flow. The AECOM report has stated that our treatment plan is actually operating very well and that we have close to thirty five percent available capacity in our treatment system and our plant. Our conveyance system has the capacity, so we understand where the issue is, is influence infiltration. And that is where we are working hard to try to address that right now. But that is something, those are steps that the town is taking.
Does, so I, I believe this application has seventy percent impervious coverage.
Correct.
Is that unusual?
So that is not for me to say whether or not it's unusual, but my feeling is, is that I wish that it was less.
Why?
Because I like to be able to get rainwater back into the ground as quickly as possible. I prefer if the footprint, either with parking and or building was able to be reduced because then the storm water runoff from the project would be reduced. In general, right now, I believe that the parking ratio is close to one point seven, one point eight.
One eight.
Believe, yeah, it's higher. Um, you know, and that's something for, for the applicant to look at a little bit further and, and for the commission to look at a little further. I wouldn't mind if that percentage got reduced, so then we could have some reduction in impervious surface at the site. But to say whether or not seventy percent is not normal or typical, that, that really isn't kind of my.
Right, it's more than, you know, what are the potential implications of, if we had many applications where you had large high density applications, multifamily, large, that's a large parcel that we're talking about here. And you have seventy percent impervious coverage, if that started to become a precedent for other applications, we have major issues.
Well, again, the, it's not necessarily a precedent because each application would come in based on their own zoning. But currently, right now, I've, I'm on my, I guess, second review memo with the applicant because I do still have open issues that still need to be resolved regarding storm water quality and storm water quantity. And the applicant has these challenges because of the amount of percentage of impervious area. So they would help themselves by reducing that in order to reduce the pollutant loading, reduce the runoff and therefore improve their project. But again, it's all, all I can do is, is provide my comments to them as to what criteria still need to be met. And then it would be up to the applicant to.
Have we had stormwater drainage issues in the surrounding areas? I thought it was actually one of the, it was a nearby street that Mr. Tucker Mann mentioned, having stormwater drainage issues during that same timeframe.
I, we would have to go to, to tie around that regarding, I mean, obviously during that storm event in September, I mean, we had road washouts, we were, we were going, and I mean, that was a very intense storm event. It, to the books, in that short amount of time, was equivalent to a two hundred year storm event. So our systems are sized for twenty five, fifty year storm events. So that means that a lot of that runoff is going down our streets, it's not actually being able to be conveyed via our pipe systems. And normally, that creates a little bit of runoff or erosion. But when you're talking about that high intensity in such a short timeframe, it, it did cause a lot of damage throughout town.
Understood, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Why would you, why would you recommend a reduction in impervious area based on the scale and scope of this project for stormwater? But not recommend the same reduction in capacity based on the density of units in the sanitary water?
So there has been no indication in our conveyance system and at our treatment plant during dry weather conditions that the volumes from the proposal would impact our conveyance system or our treatment plant negatively. So we do have that available, available capacity. The reality is, is that our soil and our land, as we start to reduce that footprint, we reduce the ability to permeate that. And also, when you increase your impervious area, you're also increasing your runoff. So we're reducing the opportunity to get water back into the ground. And we're also creating more runoff that's come, that's potentially in greater than a twenty five year storm event coming down to Weed Street, to Elm Street, you know, into our infrastructure. So it's really where I see there to be a threshold that I want to make sure that that is not exceeded, it's more storm water. We don't, I don't, and I.
Exclusive, exclusive of our one hundred year or two hundred year storms, which we all hope happen every hundred years from now on. The stormwater capacity in our infrastructure, is it, is it challenged at this point?
Well, it's dated, so if you look at.
Is it challenged, meaning is there enough in, in normal rain events? Again, excluding the hundred or two hundred years.
Right, and, and your most common, your one and your two year storm events, you're doing fine.
Okay.
Even in a twenty five year storm event, we are challenged because right now the equivalent rainfall depth of a twenty five year storm event that we designed to now is a couple of inches higher than it was forty years ago. And that's just because of where our environment is going. So what the challenge is, is that the engineering that went behind the design of a lot of our infrastructure is based on a smaller storm event. So that's how come our drainage policy addresses that each individual parcel, when they come forward, that they create no increase in runoff volume or rate of flow up to and including the twenty five year storm event. So that, those are your most typical is from your one to two year storm events, your ten year, those are common. Twenty five years, when we start to really get to the point where the capacity in our system, depending on the area that you're in, you know, if it's, if it's flat, if the pipe sizes are small, you know, were designed and haven't been enlarged, or in some cases, we've run additional catch basins in order to pick up flow. If there have been areas that haven't been improved, there could be flooding conditions. But our highway department has done a great job of trying to, you know, pick through these instances and address these issues. And I'm not saying that we've hit everything yet, as I know a lot of our residents would say we haven't. But we are doing a really good job of trying to address those so that even in a twenty five year storm event, our roads and our conveyance system are doing well.
And what is the, currently the age of our conveyance system on the sanitary side in this part of town?
So it ranges because I believe that the system down Elm Street from Park is from nineteen oh nine. The area, though, from the project site to the intersection of Park and Elm is from nineteen fifty nine. But we have had the applicant CCTV the main, and I'm going through that currently, there's twenty one videos, so you have to bear with me, I got them just last week. So I'm still making my way through them, but, but in general, actually, they, they look like they're in good condition. Our sewer department has done an excellent job of maintaining and cleaning our sewer mains. There were no known prior to this application coming forward, there were no known issues to our sewer in this area. So the fact that in general, you know, there might be some cracking that we're noticing that would require the applicant to line some sections of the main potentially, it could be a condition of approval for, for, for site plan. But that doesn't impact capacity, that's just more if our flow depth level is, you know, gets nominally increased with their additional flows, we would ask them to take that responsibility to line the pipe at that time.
To what length or what distance from the subject property would they be responsible for that?
So we've had them evaluate up to the intersection of Park and Elm because at that point, the pipe sizes increased to a twelve inch pipe. So at that point, you're, you're, you're historically, you actually have more challenges with the smaller pipes with your six and eight inch pipes, not with your larger pipes. So we've had them evaluate the eight and ten inch mains.
So has that whole length been scoped all the way to Park?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have some questions to the chairman.
Sure.
I'm sympathetic to Commissioner Bash's comments on extreme events, it's my day job. Often has to deal with extreme events. If you talk to anybody in the property insurance or reinsurance business, you have a third annual once in a lifetime event every year. And if you look at underwriting of insurance, rates are changing and issues of frequency and severity are changing greatly. And so I, I, I don't think I would be doing my job if I weren't trying to think quite a few moves deep on where maybe going into part of prepare for them today and think about how decisions we make today can affect residents in New Canaan even ten, five, ten years down the road. So I, you know, the, sort of the, the normal numbers, I wonder how normal they are. I feel we're in a bit of a catch up mode. And I, I think, again, we have to, we should be thinking about more extreme events that happen with alarming frequency and how to manage that, so. Speech, I did have a technical question, you mentioned capacity. Many of us have septic's and in my ignorant way, I think, well, there's a thousand gallons of water being flushed from a house, which could be black water from toilets, it could be the sink running, it could be someone brushing her teeth, and it can be the shower and so forth. Versus a thousand gallons of something that just got pumped out of the septic. I think those are differences rather than distinctions, am I, that a fair statement?
They, no, they're definitely different. What's, if you're talking about what's being pumped out of a septic tank, as a, yes.
It's brought to the waste treatment center in New Canaan for processing. And so when you say capacity, I'm wondering, is that a generic number, assuming that some of it is from sanitary sewer and some of it is hauled in in the septic truck or?
So they're complete, they, they are separate. So the, the design capacity of the treatment plant is for flows into the treatment. It's not for material brought in because those are solids. And so those would be, those would be going to a, a different section of the, of the treatment plant. Jim Rogers unfortunately is on vacation today, so he would be able to better answer the operations of the actual treatment plant specifically. But the design flow and the peak design flow are for effluent coming into the treatment plant, not for material being trucked in.
Another question, you mentioned about coverage issues and rainwater infiltration of the ground. I'm getting my environmental stump again here, so bear with me. What about a gray water system being installed in the facility? Able to know gray water means, okay, rain falls, hits the roof, it's got to go somewhere, usually goes in a gutter into a storm sewer. The gray water, it may not be potable and drink it, really, it's pretty desperate. But, you know, it's perfectly good for flushing toilets and other things where you really don't need purified water. And this can be a way to not only reduce pressure on potable water supplies into the facility, but also stormwater exiting the facility. I'm wondering, is there something that should be examined?
Well, the app can, can most certainly review the idea of cisterns. Either cisterns for irrigation use, cisterns for, for, for use within the building, the health department would have to get involved in that. I cannot apply to the applicant whether or not that that's financially feasible for them. They're, like I said, they're still not being able to hit requirements for quality and quantity. And I do believe that they're gonna have to look at some proprietary measures in order to address some of those. So, so maybe in, at that point in time, the, looking at an idea of a cistern or a gray water reuse would be very viable for them. But I wouldn't be able to really kind of see what the, how that works with their pro forma.
Yeah, as far as finances, I don't really focused on that, I'm just thinking about minimizing environmental impacts and burdens on our systems, either potable water supplies or stormwater effluent.
No, and, and I completely agree, but I, with the design of their propose their project, my, I'm not really at liberty to design their project. So, you know, we can make recommend, recommendations to them, but you know, if they can meet the regulations with other measures, then, you know, my hands are kind of tied on that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
So just a little more quick one. It's a sad commentary in my life that I've spent way too much time looking, researching sewer systems and stormwater drainage systems over the last few weeks. But so I, I did have this environmental concern that wasn't clarified in the last meeting, and I was hoping you might have the answer to it. It's regards to where the stormwater drainage endpoint would be from this application, where does it dump out into?
Well, ultimately, in, into the sound, but we have rivers and estuaries that collect. Well, ultimately, in into the sound, but we have rivers and estuaries that collect. The catch basins that then empty out into streams and and um, water bodies that ultimately make their way down to the sound.
And within town, what are some of those estuaries, rivers, whatever it is that would likely receive some of the output?
So, um, if you go to, um, and of course, I'm, it's on Pine Street, and I'm forgetting the name of the restaurant. Like Greens on the Go, I believe it is. You can see the parking lot. You can see one of the culvert openings. That's where some of the runoff is is going. So just, you know, visually to understand where this system is raining.
Good, thank you.
Certainly that I've seen that and can.
Mr. Chris, we we should move.
I'm sorry. This, where does it eventually go? Once it goes through the culvert, where does it end up in the pond in the park? Or where?
I can come back to you with it with an actual map of where it all goes. I think that that's probably the best.
Okay. Thank you, Engineer Copple. Attorney Hollister, are you okay? Great, okay. Um, commissioners, any other of our experts, any questions?
I did have one question from Mr. Monteleone, our um, traffic engineer. Sorry.
Uh, no. From the neighbors?
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Our traffic engineer, I'm sorry.
But, yep. Mr. Thompson.
Thompson, sorry. Mr. Thompson, you brought up an interesting point and you were just summarizing your um, uh, statement earlier. With the analysis that was done both in the applicant's traffic study and your peer review. The metrics and whoever's, I I guess it's the American Association of Traffic Engineers and their formulas used to derive the. The capacity and the the amount of traffic exiting and entering the site and the intersection. Does that include a uh. Um, an adjustment factor for what you mentioned earlier in terms of deliveries to the site these days where. You know, you've got UPS and Amazon delivering. Hundreds of times a week, if not more, um, to the site. Those capacities and the level of service calculations and the number of cars exiting, entering the site at any given day. Is that strictly for the residents of the unit? Or does that also include all the ancillary services that go along with that? Development?
It includes everything going into and out of the site on a daily basis. The the traffic generation rates that were presented focus on the morning peak hour. When people are going to work and the evening peak hour when they're returning at home at night. However. Throughout the course of the day, there's also always traffic in and out of any development. And that includes exactly what you just described is the service vehicle, workers, deliveries, et cetera. So yes, that that is included in the rate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anybody else for any of the experts? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, let's open it up to the public. Um, as I said earlier, um, one thing to note. Is that the way we do this is in general, we're looking for input. Um, so typically, sometimes people feel that going to ask the commission questions that are going to ask the experts questions. That's not how we're doing it. It's we're looking for your input and your thinking. And then if things emerge from that commentary where we need to go back to the experts or go back to the applicant. We will do so. Um, the second thing is, I'm sure many of you have already learned more about eight thirty G than you would have ever loved to. Um, but the one thing that I'm sure you've learned is we are operating under a restricted decision set of criteria. So it's ultimately up to things like health, safety, welfare. And that is why earlier, and what I would like to do is begin the evening with any experts that any neighbors have hired. Um, whether it's legal, traffic, environmental, safety, drainage, health, I'd I'd like to start with those individuals. And also if there's any neighbors who are representing a group of neighbors, um, happy to entertain that as well. I think Mr. Green is chomping at the bit. So, Mr. Green, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh. Members of the commission staff, um, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport, the law offices of Green and Gross. It's my pleasure. To appear before you this evening on behalf of Save New Canaan Inc. Which is a organization that was formed in response uh, to this project. But uh, its organizers have spent a considerable amount of time reviewing the, rev- excuse me, reviewing this and other projects. Um, in New Canaan, not because uh, they were opposed to affordable housing in any way. But in response to the need to bring some order and some common sense to the process of creating housing opportunities in New Canaan. And that is the uh, their motivating factor. And and they recognize that there is a need. For affordable housing, but I sense a great frustration on the part of this group and many of the members and the officers are here. Um, this evening, and I think it's probably the larger portion of the folks in this room. So, no one is questioning the need for affordable housing. Uh, I'm reminded uh, all the time of, uh, there's a judge in Bridgeport who was in the legislature at the time. That eight dash thirty G was adopted. And he stood on the floor of the legislature and said, uh, that this statute, and he had tremendous concerns when it was adopted. But his comment was that this statute represents the unholy alliance between greed and good intentions. And uh, it's really come to pass, uh. And uh, e- echoes all the time, and he reminds us of it all the time when we're before him on these sorts of matters. So, um. You know, as as I uh, say to my kids all the time, and we have written on the wall and uh, on our boldstone board, actions. Express intentions. And in fact, New Canaan has been a proactive leader in the region in addressing the need for affordable housing. And we've submitted, uh, today, I submitted a portion of uh, the application for a moratorium that was submitted. Uh, in April by the town to the state. And that shows that you've met the substance of those requirements. And I suppose I would ask, while we've submitted two tabs. I note that uh, the application is on file in uh, the zoning department. I'm wondering if the commission is willing to. Incorporate the entire application into the record, just so that the record is complete, uh. I was struck by the dialogue that occurred before between this commission and the applicant. And the various consultants of the applicant at the last hearing. And it was a very interesting discussion. And I I was troubled by. I guess I would suppose I would say I didn't appreciate some of the suggestions that the applicant made regarding how New Canaan has addressed. Affordable housing and and actions by this commission. And it was sort of ironic as I read some of the letters that have been. Submitted to the town that uh, counsel for the applicant, it seems to be hindering the town or questioning the town's ability to obtain a moratorium. Uh, and 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 that's troubling. And while the moratorium lapsed, um. It it's it's interesting that it lapsed because it was really due to some delays that were occasioned by a budget. Process that that caused delays. It was hindered by COVID and the inability to complete. Uh, the construction of projects and, you know, the statute really provides that the moratorium wouldn't have lapsed. Because the town actually had achieved enough points. Or and would have, but for those unfortunate delays. But and here we stand, and now with this applicant. Whose principals are involved with several applications now that are before the commission. Uh, with the with the moratorium, uh, not in place at the moment. But let's talk about this application. It's the position of my clients that. A denial is necessary to protect substantial public interests and health, safety and other matters, which you may legally consider. And you'll hear that wording a lot because it's in the statute. Uh, too often, we, uh, it's become kind of shorthand to talk about, uh, that. Uh, eight dash thirty G applications can only be attacked based on public health and safety concerns. And it's kind of gotten reduced down to that. Short line. And we would suggest that it is not that simple. It's not that simple, and I'm going to urge you to review this with the town attorney. And just to frame it and to put this all into some context. In reviewing this application and reviewing this project. And considering the balance you must consider. And compare the need for affordable housing in New Canaan with protecting. Substantial public interests and health, safety and other matters. Which you may consider and which uh, and you're acting legislatively, which provides you with a certain degree of discretion. And the point is. Eight dash two empowers this commission to adopt regulations. And again, um, I'm referring to eight dash two B two. And in adopting regulations, those other matters that this can, that this commission considers, when you adopt regulations and other matters that you may consider. Include, and it says in the statute, lessening congestion in the streets, securing safety from fire, panic flood and other dangers. Promoting public health and the general welfare, providing adequate light and air. Protecting the state's historic tribal, cultural and environmental resources. Facilitating the adequate provision for transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks and other public requirements. So it is a balancing test. It is not a bright line as as is frequently suggested. Now. I'm offering this to you, uh, as you know, an interpretation of the statute. I'm sure that Attorney Hollister will provide you with the. His thoughts on this as well, you know. We as lawyers spend our days writing briefs where we all cite the law and we all have the law on our side when we walk into a courthouse or when we walk. Yet not come before a commission, everyone walks in thinking they're right and half the time you're wrong or someone's wrong in those. Uh, situations. So I urge you to seek the counsel of the town attorney. Who represents you and he will give you a legal opinion on the state of the law on this. But uh. It's our position that in balancing those uh. In balancing those considerations, there is substantial evidence in this record to deny this application. And you've heard a lot, and I am impressed by the fair and balanced testimony. That you got uh, tonight from consultants that the town retained, and you asked insightful questions and they provide you, provided you. What I thought were very fair and balanced responses. But ultimately. You heard from the applicant's uh, consultants. You heard from the consultants that the town retained, and you'll hear from some consultants on our behalf. You are ultimately the finder of facts in this application. And I am sure that Attorney Gelderman will support that notion. You ultimately are the ones. Who will be making the decision and judging the experts and the expert testimony and the impacts. Uh, of that testimony on this application. But and once again. It is our position that there is uh, ample evidence in the record to deny this application. There's ample evidence if you so choose, and we've heard a lot about modifying the entrance way. And while I appreciated. Hearing these experts and these consultants say that, it didn't take a lot of. Just basic common sense, looking at this application, this entryway. Uh, that is proposed for a hundred and two unit development. Is clearly inadequate and having a single access to the back of this property, uh, just, just, I I don't think. There is this notion in the law that you require expert testimony for matters outside of sort of basic common understanding. Well, I think this goes beyond. Common understanding. So, uh. What we'd like to do is get into a a little bit of the nuts and bolts. I will move along quickly. It's, I know it's warm in the room and. I know what Chief Kingsbury is used to being in the heat, but you know, we're fading here. So, uh. I'd like to introduce, uh. Uh, Stephen Trinkus of Trinkus Engineering. He did present, uh, we did file a report. I have paper copies if the commission would like them. I don't know if you want to consult with them. I'm happy to circulate them.
If if you have them, certainly.
Yeah, I do. So, uh. Let me do that.
Mr. Trinkus, funny enough, uh, he's gonna come up and uh, he will. And uh, it's our position. Actually, what I'll let him do is move through this more salient portions of his uh. Of his review of the application, and then I will uh, pose some questions for him if I may.
Good evening. Um, my name is Stephen Trinkus. I'm a licensed professional engineer uh, from Southbury, Connecticut. I've been licensed in uh, Connecticut since nineteen eighty eight. I also have a lot of experience in what's called low impact development, which is a focus on runoff volumes and water quality. Um, which your town engineer um, discussed briefly in her testimony. I'm not gonna go through the report. There's a lot of technical. Uh, information, but I want to focus on the big picture aspects. I fully concur with your town engineer. The water quality and runoff volumes are not being addressed. Um, for example, the rain garden is proposed in the back of the site is where the existing pool house, uh, pool patio area is. So all that material development is being removed, and you're gonna stick a rain garden basically where you have disturbed soils. While the applicant is on test bits beyond that development, you don't know what the soils are like where all those buildings and other improvements are. Rain gardens or bi retention systems are interchangeable terms, but they're a LID infiltration practice. And we have no evidence to support that that system is gonna work in any shape or form because you don't know what kind of dirt they're gonna put. To fill in the hole that they're gonna remove the foundation. Um, all of the permeable pavement systems, the permeable paver systems, they're not an asphalt. They're, I believe, paving stones with pea gravel between them. Are set on uh, gravel layers, basically two different layers of crushed stone. Crushed stone provides absolutely no water quality benefit whatsoever. So the runoff directed either the falls on the permeable paver systems or in some cases. Uh, asphalt areas which are draining onto those systems is not providing any treatment. There are under drains to them, so you're not gonna get reductions in runoff volume. Um, all of this runoff ultimately is being discharged to the town in New Canaan Drainage System. Uh, I believe it's the intersection of Weed and Elm. And ultimately, this water does get to wetlands and watercourses further south from this site. So. This is, the stormwater management here is not LID. I believe the applicant in one of their portions of the stormwater. Report talks about, this is, you know, using all LID practices. Really, the only one that's really considered lit here is the rain garden. The permeable paver sections with just gravel. Don't do anything for water quality at all, and it's not environmentally friendly. You have a large number of underground cultech systems. Those are not lid. Those are structural drainage practices. Um, we have no analysis uh, to demonstrate what the pollutant loads will be generated by the site from all the parking areas. From the roof. Um, in my letter, there's a citation uh, to North Carolina State University. Where they found up to forty percent of nutrient loads, nitrogen and phosphorus comes as atmospheric deposition. So. What's happening outside the windows now, we're during a rainfall event, lands on impervious surfaces. And when it does rain, which. Hopefully will be soon for all of our lawns, um, that stuff is washed off. So forty percent of our nutrient loads don't come from lawns. They're coming from this atmospheric deposition. And again, there is no treatment of that runoff. Now, what is the impact of these increased nutrient loads? Well, in freshwater systems. Phosphorus comes in two forms, soluble and particulate. Soluble phosphorus sits right in the stormwater. Goes into a receiving wetland or a stream or a small pond. Um, and it becomes readily available for non-native plants, many invasive wetland plants. And it provides a quick food source and they take it up and they will grow extremely quickly. Phosphorus will also uh, feed algae blooms. And when you have the hot weather like we've had and you've got. More or less very slow moving water in pond systems, algae becomes very prevalent. And you can get different types of algae, and I'm not an expert on the algae, but you can also get ones that are toxic where it forces. Uh, swimming areas to be closed because of high, you know, toxicity in the algae. Nitrogen, on the other hand, is a uh, major problem in tidal and and saltwater systems. And ultimately, as your engineer said, it goes to Long Island Sound. What nitrogen does in stormwater is will kill tidal grasses. And when tidal grasses are killed by the excessive nutrients of nitrogen. You know, the grasses die off, and now you've got wet tidal wetland areas that become much more prone to increased wave action. Um, and winds where now you get erosion. So it's a major problem. Now, these impacts do not simply happen one day after you build something. But they are cumulative impact over time. And you can see from. And you can see from development that was done back in the eighties um in many areas of adverse aquatic impacts because nobody knew anything forty years ago about this. This is a relatively new phenomenon from really about two thousand going forward. But when you also have all these large pavement areas outside, you have lots of cars coming in and out of here. You have one point eight spaces per unit. So, you know, theoretically, you've almost got, you know, two hundred cars coming in and out of here. Plus, as was discussed earlier, your FedEx trucks, your, you know, all kinds of other delivery vehicles. Well, we all know that, you know, our brake systems, and if you wash your car, you'll know your aluminum steel rims, whatever, covered in black dust. That is zinc from your brake pads. Um, you also get oil leaks from a car, and I'm not talking large oil leaks. I'm talking something the size of your pinky nail. But when you start adding it up over paved surfaces from a hundred or a hundred and fifty cars and it rains, it starts gaining up to a large amount. Now, both metals and hydrocarbons are have high toxicity to the aquatic organisms that live in the bottom of our freshwater streams. Many of our freshwater streams have a gravel substrate, and that's where what's called the benthic organisms. These are the bottom of your aquatic food chain live. Well, the metals are highly toxic to them as are hydrocarbons. And they also come in particulate and soluble forms and go right in the stormwater. None of these things are being addressed by the stormwater management system. So you will have adverse environmental impacts due to the water quality uh aspects of the runoff from this particular site. Now, going to the other part of the coin, as your engineer alluded to, um, there is what's called the NOAA fourteen data. This was rainfall data that was um refined by Cornell University. Um, in my letter, you'll see what the uh rainfall amounts are, and they are pretty excessive. As your engineer said, some of the storms went up like two inches from what we used to use um in a twenty-four hour event. Um, however, the applicant does not use a NOAA fourteen data. They're using numbers that are less than that. So they're basically underestimating the rainfall, or I should say the runoff that is going to be coming off this site. The other problem um with rainfall events is we are getting short duration, high intensity rainfall events. So when you have lots of impervious area and you get two inches of rain in two hours, you have a giant slug of volume being discharged from the site. Now, as engineers, when we design stormwater management practices, detention ponds, even these LID practices, they're based on twenty-four hour rainfall events where it's assumed by the models that the rainfall is uniform over twenty-four hours. So if you took a six inch rainfall and it starts from midnight and goes to the following midnight, if you think about six inches over twenty-four hours, that's a really light rain. You know, think about how much it is per hour or per minute. But when you get two or three inches of rain in three or four hours, basically a stormwater pond would likely fail because of all that water coming in at once. Well, so are so will lid practices. Lid practices are typically designed for what term the water quality swarm. This is one inch of rain in twenty-four hours. Now, these systems can be modified to handle larger storm events, but the designs in this case have not been sized to that. So those high intensity, short duration storms will overwhelm the site drainage and then will also be discharged into the town of New Canaan system. And as I heard your engineer say earlier, you know, there is capacity issues. And when you have a large impervious area and you have a lot of rain in a short period of time, you will overwhelm it. Um, back in about two thousand five, on my way to a meeting in Darien one night that it was pouring, as you got off Super Seven onto I ninety-five, there were catch basins on the entrance ramp. They that area experienced five inches of rain in four hours. Now, this is something engineers, I guess we get a little quote unquote anal and looking at certain things. But this was a case where the water above a catch basin surface was two feet above the top of the basin. The water was literally coming out of the top of the basin. That's under pressure. That's telling you the system cannot handle the flow. So these short duration storms can overwhelm your system. Now, when the runoff volume goes out onto the road, it doesn't go back into the catch basin because every other basin downhill is the same condition. It spreads out over the paved surface. So now you've got water surface onto the road and people at highway speed. And hydroplaning becomes a problem. I had an experience on um Route three nine, I think it's three ninety-five coming down from uh uh the Mass Pike down towards Norwich area uh on a rainstorm. And I had never hydroplaned until that time, and I did, and it was scary. I had complete loss of control. All I did was get off the gas. And luckily, the car slowed down and there wasn't a lot of cars. But literally, my car was just all over the road because I was riding on a film of water. So the increased runoff volumes that the system cannot handle will cause a public health safety issue on the roadways uh because it will spread out. Now, if that system occurs, uh, that failure of the stormwater system to convey the water occurs during the winter when it's twenty degrees out, which we have gotten, you can also get black ice over the roadway. Black ice, as we all have probably had a slide or two on that, is very hazardous to driving. So there is another major safety issue associated with increased runoff volumes that are not being attenuated. Your engineer is absolutely correct. You want to infiltrate the water, get it back into the ground to eliminate the runoff volume that is being generated. But in this particular case, water quality is not being addressed. Neither is runoff volume. Um, the applicant is also because they're more familiar with the Greenwich Stormwater Manual is applying a lot of the Greenwich standards to New Canaan. That's not applicable. You don't have, you know, you're not using the Greenwich Stormwater Manual. What the document, the controlling document in New Canaan, as it is in many other towns, is the two thousand four Connecticut DEP Stormwater Quality Manual. They require a three foot separation from the bottom of any infiltration practice to seasonal groundwater. And I went through every one of these practices. And in many cases, you've got a couple tenths of a foot, maybe a foot and a half, but you don't have three feet. So it's not in compliance with the uh DEP manual. And I'm sure I'm going to hear by somebody that, well, it's a guidance document. And yes, DEP use that language. It's designed to supplement rather than supplant professional judgment. However, in the absence of other rules, you have to follow it. And the reason for the separations is to provide an unsaturated zone to infiltrate water similar to where a septic works. We can't put a septic system with the bottom of the trench in hardpan because the water won't infiltrate. There's an eighteen inch separation under the health code to provide that treatment of the runoff in the soil and also to provide an unsaturated zone uh for that. So there's many technical deficiencies in the application. I have uh reviewed your engineer's initial uh comments. I think they're part of the last submittal. Um, I did take a quick look as um your staff posted the five eighteen twenty-two revised plans. Just the other day, I kept looking for them and they weren't on the website. The only thing I saw there that was different, there were two stone bed areas placed along along the western driveway where they were going to have a trench drain on the side and direct the water into the stone bed under the pavement. But again, there's no evidence that these systems are going to infiltrate. The other major problem I see is the applicant is lumping systems together um as one practice. All of the permeable pavement systems have separate distinct drainage areas. Every one of them has to be modeled hydrologically in a program that we use called HydroCAD because they're separate. You can't lump them all together. They're all different. They all have varying uh depths relative to groundwater, and they all have to be evaluated uh independently. But uh regarding this whole application, there will be public health and safety issues because of the increased runoff volumes generated from this site. And additionally, there will be adverse water quality impacts to your aquatic systems as New Canaan is not a tidal town. But you know, everybody has to do their part. I mean, even towns in Northwest Connecticut address nitrogen because ultimately that water winds up in Long Island Sound. So, thank you.
I, if I may just ask if you follow up questions of Mr. Trinkus. Mr. Trinkus, you uh in your report that we presented, there are roughly six pages of single space typing identifying missing insufficient or unsatisfactory data that the applicant has produced. Can you, just for the commission, uh, because I know this is going to come up. Can you quantify the likelihood? Or is it a certainty that there will be harm to environmental resources by virtue of this plan?
Yes, it's my professional opinion there will be harm to environmental resources, your aquatic systems, because the plan does not address what we call non-point source pollutant loads.
And similarly, that this system will not be able to infiltrate uh the volume of uh stormwater. Can you offer an opinion as to the likelihood of that outcome?
Yes, based on my review of the stormwater plans, uh, the stormwater report, the systems will not infiltrate the volume as the applicant is intending. And therefore, that volume will be discharged to the New Canaan system and your town engineer will then have to deal with it.
And similarly, that, well, not today, but someday when there are freezing conditions that at some point there would be a discharge of water into the streets, um, either Elm Street or Weed Street.
Uh, under certain conditions, um, and we can't control the weather. Uh, we've had rainfall events in the past where it has rained at night and then it's gotten very cold. And we've all woken up to everything being covered in ice. So under certain conditions, you know, in the winter, you can wind up with either flooding on the street or you're going to wind up with black ice on it.
I think that um everything else is covered in the report. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I I imagine that commission may have questions for Mr. Trinkus.
Any questions for the gentleman?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think there's just one comment um before we get to traffic. One comment that I would like to uh make is there's been some uh comment and there are some materials in the application that suggests the use of an easement for uh septic lines and the uh zoning administrator did uh put uh documents into the record that show the subdivision map that show the various easements. And I should note that several, there are several property owners who are part of uh amongst my client who are the holders of properties that are subject to those easements and that that sewer line runs through their properties. And it is just, I should note for the record that it that it is our position that this development cannot take advantage of easement um for purposes of providing access for septic lines to the town system. So I just want to note that for the record. Uh, the next issue um is uh dealing with um traffic. And you did receive a report. There was a supplemental report. Oh, I'm sorry. There's one point, just if I may. Um, I I just wanted to note that Mr. Trinkus's CV is in the record. Um, and similarly, um, I'm about to introduce Michael Monteleone of Simco Traffic Engineering. His CV is in uh the record as well. And I would like to introduce Mr. Monteleone to uh highlight the more salient points of his report. He is not here this evening, but he's available online and um he can be unmuted and allowed to present. I appreciate it.
And is he raising his hand? Mr. Monteleone?
This is Commissioner Knodg. I did have a question. Could I uh ask a question?
Sure, go ahead. Go ahead. But uh in time, if you can find him, please.
Could you uh could the attorney explain why it is that the uh easement is not available and how that affects the ability of the project to uh uh hook into the town uh sewers?
Uh, generally, and again, uh, it's not the province necessarily of this commission to evaluate uh legal documents such as deeds and easements. But the general principle would be that at the time that the subdivision was formed, uh, there were single family homes on each of those lots. And it would be our position that the easement contemplated the use of the line for single family homes and the burden imposed by single family homes in terms of use, in terms of maintenance. And that uh in now propose a development of this magnitude was not contemplated at the time that the easement was granted. And uh, the law refers to the concept of overburdening the easement. And it would be our position based on our research to date that the use of the sewer line for this proposed project would overburden the easement over several of my clients' properties or under and through several of my clients' properties.
Lynn, do we have the gentleman?
Yes, I'm here. Hi, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to present this evening. I'm Michael Monteleone with Simco Engineering. Uh, we're located in Holmes, New York, which is just across the border from Danbury, Connecticut. I have um over thirty-four years of transportation uh studies and and transportation um and and traffic studies across the country, including Connecticut. I'm a member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I have a professional planning license in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a member of the Institute of um American Institute of Certified Planners. And the principal of my firm, who I work very closely with on this um report, is a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, and he has signed the um the report that was submitted into the record. One um quick thing I wanted to bring up before I begin my presentation, um, just one of the last comments that was given to Mr. Thompson, the traffic expert. Um, he was correct in his re- reply about the trip generation of the site. Uh, one thing I wanted to add to his to his testimony is that is that the uh trip generation rates for this type of um housing development is based on studies over the past twenty plus years. Um, so that that's where the data is from. But because the propensity of uh and use of of these um Amazon and other delivery trucks has become such a huge thing in the last couple of years since the pandemic. Um, the the data hasn't caught up yet to the trends that are going on across the country. So I would say that in my expert opinion, um, those types of trips coming to the site would be underrepresented in the in the trip generation that was presented by the applicant. Unfortunately, I don't have any studies um currently available that would support that, but anecdotally, everybody understands how much that industry has has grown over the past two years. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Monteleone. Can you uh review the um the various uh findings in your report?
Sure. So I was tasked with reviewing the traffic impact study uh dated in November of twenty twenty-one, prepared by solely engineering uh for the the applicant's uh project at seven fifty-one Weed uh Weed Street. Um, the multifamily residential building consists of a hundred and two units and a hundred and eighty-two parking spaces. So based on my review, I offer the following. Um, I agree with Mr. Thompson in his uh review of the traffic analysis. Um, the level of service is going to increase from a level of service E, which is, this is at capacity to F, which is overcapacity at the intersection of um Elm Street and and Weed Street intersection in the in the westbound direction. Um, that is going to cause uh a queue of over nine vehicles during the AM peak period, which would be roughly about two hundred and twenty-five feet, which would extend beyond where the proposed driveway is going to be um laid out, uh, which is less than two hundred feet from the intersection. So that queuing could block the the ability for vehicles to get into and out of the um the intersection. As Mr. Thompson also mentioned, that because you have such congestion at this intersection is going to cause vehicles to do things they wouldn't normally do to get across the intersection um with less gaps because you're not controlled on either direction on Weed Street. So as vehicles try to turn left or right onto Weed Street, uh, there there are going to be situations where gaps that would normally not be taken by vehicles would be because uh they they don't want to sit and wait um, you know, for an extended period period of time. As far as the uh pedestrians are concerned, there are no sidewalks on the north side of of Elm Street. And and part of the allure of this project based from the applicant's perspective and what they've been touting is that this is going to be a transit oriented development, which means that they're they're trying to focus their market share on people who may not necessarily own an automobile or not own two or three per family. And and um that would mean that that people would have to use the south sidewalk along Elm to get to the train station or to or to any type of, um, commercial use. So what that requires then is that a, a crosswalk needs to be added, as Mr. Thompson alluded to in his presentation, along that westbound, uh, side of, of, um, of Elm Street to get across to the south side of Elm to walk to the downtown. Um, a couple of things I wanted to point out with, with this. Number one, the crosswalk itself is in a position where vehicles traveling southbound along Weed, Weed Street to turn left into Elm do not have to stop because there's no stop control in their direction. The only vehicles they would have to stop for would be vehicles traveling northbound on Weed Street, uh, but essentially they only have to slow down, um, and they would come upon these pedestrians pretty, pretty quickly. There's no, um, there's no ability for those vehicles to, to be stopped. Um, you can, you can put signs and say, please watch for pedestrians in the crosswalk. But if a vehicle is making that turn and is looking at traffic coming at them, which is also uncontrolled, a northbound Weed Street, they might, may not be looking at the pedestrians in the crosswalk until it's too late. So this is a situation that is, is dangerous and, and requires attention. I know that Mr. Thompson alluded to the same thing and I, and I agree that this is, is something that is, is not, um, satisfactory in, in, in my view and is a safe condition that's being added to the, to the, uh, for the, for the, for the walking public. Um, in addition, um, the sidewalk that is on the south side of Elm is very narrow and barely meets the Americans with Disabilities Act, um, standards and is adjacent to the curb. So there's no area, there's no planted area or, or grass area between, buffer area between the, the sidewalk and the street. So anytime you plow in the wintertime, any kind of appreciable snowfall, that snow is going to go right over that, that, um, that sidewalk and, and effectively block anyone from walking through there. And if it, and if it freezes, like typically it does after a snowstorm, it gets colder, um, that, that, that sidewalk could be out of commission for, for a week at a time. Um, so the ability for people who they claim may not have a vehicle would be very difficult because then people can't go to the store, they can't get to work, they don't have any, any means for getting to the downtown, um, to, to, to take care of, of, of their, their normal business without having, having a vehicle. Another issue that I, that I see that hasn't really been, been discussed tonight is parking. Um, the applicant is proposing a hundred and eighty-two parking spaces on site with a ratio of one seven eight, one point seven eight spaces per unit. So that number of parking spaces may or may not be enough to handle the number of people who are going to be living in this, uh, community. Um, it also brings up a lot of interesting, you know, questions. And it begs the question because the applicant does not, does not provide any kind of a parking plan in their, in their report. Um, one of the things that, that I see is that, as I mentioned, you know, it's, it's, it's supposed to be a transit-oriented development site, but even though residents who may work in Manhattan, who live here and walk to this train station on a daily basis, would still, would still not preclude them from owning a vehicle for use during, uh, evenings and, and on weekends. So in, in as much as people could commute and walk and not drive their car to the train station, um, a lot of people still need a car because of, of things they need to do in times other than, other than working. So, so the questions I have then for the applicant is, is how would these spaces be allocated to the units? You know, who would get them? Who wouldn't get them? How many would they be lim- limited to? Um, how would they be, uh, div- divide out to the, to the residents? Um, would the residents be assigned to a specific space or would it be open to whomever? Again, that's not addressed. How many total spaces would be dedicated for visitors and employees of the facility? Uh, because, because you have a hundred and eighty-two spaces, not all of those could be dedicated to the, to the residents. At some, some subset of that would need to go to, um, visitors and, and employees. Um, would there be any events held at the facility? You know, whether they're a, a, a sanctioned event or if someone has a, you know, a large party or whatever, you know, where are these people going to park? Because to be honest, as, as, as a safety officer, uh, pointed out earlier, um, you know, he wanted to preclude parking on Elm Street, which I totally agree because you, there's really no place you can park. And I would, I would extend that to, to Weed Street because there's really no place that you can park without blocking the lane of traffic. So we get down to the point where if this development were, were somehow, um, um, gone through the whole process and is approved, what happens if it opens and there's not enough parking spaces for the people that live there or for the people who visit? Where are they going to park? They're going to park in front of neighbors', houses? Are they going to park on grass, on neighbor's grass? Wh- where are they going to park? We, we don't know. Because none of this has been, has been vetted in the applicant's report. And I think this is a serious, serious issue because you have no recourse. There's no other place where people can park other than onsite. So it better make sure that the number of spaces will accommodate all of who is going to be coming to the site. Um, because if it doesn't, you're going to have a serious, uh, problem. Another issue is site distance. So in the applicant's report, they did a, a site distance study according to the Connecticut, um, Highway Design Manual, which is based on the MUTCD and, um, the, the, and Ashdod. So, so the, the, the site distance report shows that vehicles turning left with vehicles coming, coming, um, along Elm Street, along westbound Elm Street and what the site distance would be for that. But there isn't anything in there that, that talks about the calculation for looking right for those same vehicles. Because when you turn left, you also have to look both left and right before you can complete the turn. Because both vehicles are, are, are potential, um, hazards for, for left-turning vehicles. So because of this, um, and because of the speeds that were, were identified in the, in the report, um, and it's, and, and the, and the distance to the intersection is only two, is less than two hundred feet, um, a vehicle could turn, could look left before they turn left and not go back and look right. And that turn, that vehicle coming southbound on Weed Street could be on that person very, very quickly, um, because, because the speeds that were identified, the eighty-five percentile speeds were over thirty, thirty miles an hour on Elm Street in both directions. So, so that, they can cover that distance very quickly. And, and the, and the amount of, a distance that is required to the right would be, would be over three hundred feet. And, and they only have less than two hundred feet to the right. And that was not addressed in the, in the report. They said that, that the, the site distance to the right met the requirement, but, but it wasn't expressly, um, discussed or how that number was, was calculated. And then it also, as, as the, um, safety folks talked about, um, getting in and out of the site driveway for larger vehicles, whether they are the, um, the new Canon ladder three vehicle or, or moving vans or any kind of larger trucks getting in and out of the site. Um, those vehicles would need to, if they're coming from westbound Elm Street, would need to, to go all the way into the oncoming lane of traffic, the eastbound direction, to be able to make the swing to get into the, into the driveway. They need to cross over the, the median line in the, in the driveway and get onto the exiting vehicle side of the, of the exit to be able to get into the site. So if a fire truck is trying to get in there and, and, and there's a vehicle blocking it, they can't do anything. That vehicle would have to back. And if there's cars behind them, that, that fire engine is going to lose precious time to try to get into the, into the site to, uh, to provide assistance, whether it's a medical emergency or, or a fire emergency or, or whatever. So that's, that's a dangerous, um, uh, situation. There are also problems when the, the vehicle leaves because it needs to then go into the incoming lanes to be able to swing around and get, and get out and cross the, 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 um, median to get out of the site. So those are some of the problems that I see. So let me just give you a quick conclusion. So the westbound approach of Elm Street is projected operated at a very poor level of service F with fifty-one point one seconds of delay with an extensive vehicle queue, which would ostensibly block the, the exit and entrance of vehicles into the site driveway. Uh, pedestrian facilities are generally inadequate to accommodate the flow. There is no parking operations plan. Site distance is not adequate from the proposed, uh, site driveway. An auto turn analysis shows that the fire engine is required to use counterflow lanes in order to enter and exit the site driveway. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Monteleone, uh, just a few questions, uh, I'm, I'm wondering if we can get, uh, from the materials, the new truck turning figure that was introduced, which is in the application materials. If we can get that up on the screen. And as, as we're doing that, uh, Mr. Monteleone, can you comment on sort of the, your opinion on the likelihood of, of danger, the likelihood of safety, uh, of there being a safety issue by virtue of the fact that certainly fire trucks, as we've heard, and there was an analysis done wheel to wheel that you heard Mr. Kingsbury discuss, but certainly, for example, a moving van or other trucks, there seems to be a lack of analysis. But it would appear that any sort of a moving van or, or a truck with it, uh, a moving van with a trailer and a truck that would have to enter that site, the, uh, uh, the likelihood of harm resulting from this layout where a truck has to enter into the oncoming lane of traffic uh, less than two hundred feet from an intersection. Can you comment on that for the commission?
Yeah, sure. So, so let me, so just getting back to the fire engine portion of this, let me, let me get this up on the screen, um. Uh, which button do I hit to share the screen?
Uh, we're calling up the, uh,
Oh, you're doing, okay, on your own, okay. Got it.
So I think that the last document, uh, there was a truck turning plan that was the last document in the series. It's under, uh,
Mr. Green, can he attempt talking?
Sure, of course. I'm happy to have him do that. Uh, Miss, why don't you go ahead or, uh?
Yeah, so, so, so as far as the, the, the fire engine, um, coming into the site, as, as I mentioned, if it's headed westbound on Elm Street, it needs to make that big swing into the eastbound, uh, oncoming lane of traffic, which is dangerous for everybody, especially, you know, with a, with a fire engine, um, going very quickly to try to respond to the emergency. Um, that is not a great situation to make that really wide, um, swing, um, to, to make the turn in. And then you're basically crossing over the entrance lane and the exit lane to be able to get the vehicle into that narrow, um, entrance into the site. And, and there, there, there are going to be vehicles that are going to be either coming in or leaving the site and are going to be blocking the, the truck, the, the, the fire truck from getting into and, and out of the site. Um, you know, this, and, and in terms of moving vans and other, um, you know, they're not going to be moving nearly as quickly as, as a fire engine is. Um, but, but still, when they come in, if they can't make that full swing, got to go into the issues with, uh, you know, with side swiping of, of vehicles as they pass. Um, so that there's, there's a lot of, um, a lot of dangerous things that could, could happen.
But similarly, similarly, those trucks are not going to have flashing lights and necessarily be safe or red. And, uh, so, so can you comment on the, the sort of quantify the dangerous condition that is created? If you may.
Yeah, yeah. So, so like, like, like I'm, I'm saying is that, is that the vehicle, when it, when it comes in, has to swing very wide and, and, and it could hit uh, the, a, a vehicle coming in the other, the direction, either entering or exiting, uh, exiting the site because there's just not enough room when it, when a, when a vehicle, uh, makes that swing, you know, a larger vehicle.
So there is a likelihood of, there is a likelihood of harm from that condition.
Correct, correct. Yes, yes.
And similarly, and this wasn't addressed in any of the reports that I saw, is I note that the driveway uh, that wraps around what I'll call the southeast corner of the building is just a few feet off the building and it is a bend. So that a car exiting the site that's moving in a southbound direction, that's coming to that turn that's hard against the building.
Right. There's, there's a site distance there is, 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 is difficult because the vehicle will be behind, behind the building and then will make, start to make that turn and it needs to go into that lane. And, and that's a real dangerous situation.
Any truck, virtually it appears, that is trying to negotiate that turn would be clipping that lane.
That's, that's correct. Right. And, 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 and even if it's going at a slow rate of speed, um, two vehicles going in the opposite directions in close proximity, wouldn't take much for them to collide in, in that, in that position. That's sort of a dangerous, uh, blind area on the site.
And that creates a likelihood of harm in that area. Is that correct?
That, 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 that's, that's correct.
That's your professional opinion based on?
Yes, yes, because, because any, any, any oversized vehicle trying to make that turn even at a, a slow rate of speed, um, there's not, there's not a lot of room for decision-making. And once they go into that other lane, if the other vehicle coming, they're trying to leave the site in the southbound direction, um, could easily, uh, contact that, that vehicle.
Similarly, uh, can you comment? I, I note that, uh, there was, uh, discussion and you heard Mr. Thompson. And I know you referenced the increase in the queuing time and the reduction in the level of service of the intersection on Elm Street from an E to an F. Can you comment on the, what I'll call the safety aspects or the impact on public health and safety in this instance, uh, of that condition?
Right. So as I mentioned in my presentation, uh, and I'll, and I'll, I'll readdress it here, is that vehicles that are delayed tend to make maneuvers that they wouldn't normally make because they don't want to wait. They get anxious, they, they, they get frustrated. And by doing that, they'll, the gaps, the, the, the minimum number of gaps that you have on Weed, on Weed Street, because it's uncontrolled, vehicles will force their way in, in a smaller gap than what they would normally, uh, a normal safe gap. They'll, they'll try to cut it closer so they can get into the traffic stream. And then they may misjudge how fast the vehicle's going. Um, so it's a, it's a bad combination. Uh, and, um, um, and that frustration does build in as, as, um, as, as the delay increases. And, and Mr. Thompson also was stating the same thing, um, I'm stating in his testimony.
And can you just comment on the likelihood of harm from that condition?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just because, just because you don't have a lot of accidents currently, the number of accidents could dramatically increase as the congestion builds. Because as I said, when you get into those kinds of, um, those tough situations where, where people are getting frustrated and they're getting delayed, they start doing things that they don't normally do, which becomes unsafe.
So could or shall, in your professional experience?
What do you mean? The likelihood of, of an increase in, 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 in crashes?
Yes, shall.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think it, it, it shall increase. And as, as the situation gets worse and, and traffic increases, um, the likelihood goes up.
And in your professional opinion, by virtue of the proposed design, is pedestrian safety, will pedestrian safety be impaired by virtue of that design?
Yes, I, I, I believe so because I think that, uh, again, as Mr. Thompson also pointed out, the crosswalk is in a, in a bad location because you have vehicles traveling northbound on Weed Street that don't have to stop. And, and vehicles traveling southbound on, on Weed, um, that don't have to stop crossing that, that, um, that crosswalk. And, and as I mentioned, what, what makes it difficult for the southbound Weed Street driver is that they have to look first at oncoming vehicles on northbound Weed Street and even, and even right turning vehicles on Weed Street. So their focus is on that vehicle first. And then secondly, the, the, the pedestrian. So once you, you can't look at, it's really hard to look at both at the same time. Once you look at the, at the harm, potential harm of a conflicting vehicle, then you turn your attention to the pedestrian. At that point, you're moving left because you're not coming, most cases you're not coming to a complete stop on Weed because there's no control. Um, and as you, as you drift into the intersection, you start turning left, a, a pedestrian could, could show up right in your, in your field of vision and it might be too late to, to stop at that point.
All right. And, uh, I'm just going to ask Ms. Brooks-Aveney to call up in the application material tab, tab ten, page fifty-six. And while she's doing that, I want to ask you, and just to have this in the record, and I appreciate the patience of the commission, but I'm just trying to get the- And just to have this in the record, and I appreciate the patience of the commission, but I'm just trying to get these. Items into the record. You heard Mr. Trinkus. Testify as to the likelihood that there will be stormwater discharged into the street under certain conditions during winter conditions. That will produce icy conditions in the road. Can you just comment on? And while I know it's obvious, but based on your education, training and experience, the safety aspects involved or impacts by virtue of that condition?
Yeah, so as as I mentioned. As you get into the winter conditions along the sidewalk on on the southbound side of. Of Elm, you you get into a situation where there's no place to put the the snow that's plowed off of Elm Street. It has to go somewhere. And when you start pushing it, it's only going to go on the sidewalk because there's no buffer between the curb and the sidewalk itself. So when that happens, you don't even need a lot of snow to get pushed onto that that sidewalk and it becomes. You know, impassable, especially if you get a freeze after after a snowstorm. Because it's going to be ice, people could fall, there's poor lighting along that entire stretch of. Of of Elm Street, so people can't really see. There's there's actually poor lighting at the intersection of of Elm and and Weed as well. With people crossing at the crosswalk.
And can you just comment on the dangerous condition for vehicles in in the road as well, just briefly?
It's in so far as.
Public health and safety.
Yeah, so so, yeah, so as I as I mentioned, the issues, the issues for for drivers. Are the fact that you have a poor. A poorly operating intersection, which is only going to get worse with the with the implementation of the. Of the development, you're going to have an extensive queue during the AM peak hour, which is going to block the driveway. You're going to have emergency vehicles trying to get into a. A very narrow driveway and and. And crossover into oncoming traffic inside the development and outside the development, which could also cause problems, especially, you know. Emergency vehicles racing. To a a a to serve. People in danger. You're also, you're also going to have another situation. Like I said, if you don't have enough parking spaces on site, if people start parking along Weed Street and along and. Along Elm Street, they're going to be blocking the lane of traffic, or if they partially are on the pavement and on the grass. They're going to be effectively blocking that lane and causing all kinds of problems with 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 the movement of traffic, people getting in and out of their cars. It's 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 it really is a nightmare scenario if if people start parking on those streets because they're really not capable of handling.
I know you want to get things in the record, but we're getting repetitive right now, and by definition, it is in the record. Yes, the last item, Mr. Monteleone, and we haven't talked about this, is up on the screen is. The purported sightline analysis by the applicant, as you referenced earlier, that sightline analysis is. There's a procedure under the DOT Highway Design Manual in Connecticut. And in your opinion, I note that this is done on a. Sort of a aerial drawing and it does not show with any detail. Property lines, there is some reference. To removing stone walls. It's not apparent to me, based on that, whether the stone walls are on this property or on a neighboring property that would permit. The removal of stone walls. So in your opinion, does this drawing provide adequate? Data for determining whether sightlines are adequate with respect to this project?
I I think more detail, as you suggested, should be added to this drawing to show any any obstruction. On on both the applicant's property as well as any neighboring properties to make sure that there are no impediments to the site to the left. And as I mentioned in my testimony, the distance to the right does not seem adequate, especially due to the fact that. Southbound vehicles on on Weed Street, left turning vehicles do not have to stop. In most cases, when they're when they're turning and they're traveling based on the applicant's report over thirty miles an hour in both directions. And those vehicles can get on top of a turning vehicle very quickly.
All right, thank you. I have nothing further of Mr. Monteleone. I don't know if the commission has.
Any questions for the traffic engineer? No, we're good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Monteleone. Just a few more items for the commission and. I note that all of these items are in the record. I note that Ms. Brooks Avani provided a staff report, Mr. Thompson's report, Mr. Kingsbury's report. I note in Ms. Brooks Avani's report that she highlights several inconsistencies in the plan. I won't cover those, but I would. I suppose. Reference her report as part of my presentation. I would ask the commission, there was a comment made. By. The applicant regarding. Comments that were allegedly made by Deputy Chief Di Federico. I would ask, I don't know if he's here this evening, he is here this evening, after I'm through speaking. I I don't know whether in the context of my presentation, but I think that we would ask Mr. Deputy Chief Di Federico to just comment. There were comments made about. As I understand it, characterizing. Chief Di Federico's characterization of the safety issue presented, and I guess I would, I can do it now. If you could come forward and Chief Deputy Chief Di Federico and just comment.
What am I commenting on?
Well, apparently. You were mentioned at the last hearing and there were comments made by Mr. Solly. Regarding nuanced issues and your satisfaction with safety issues involving the site. And I don't know if you're familiar with that.
I don't know exactly what he said word for word, but I can just tell you what. My observations of the intersection are, and it is. Has been described tonight, it is a challenging intersection, many intersections in New Canaan are. It's not the only one, something that. Maybe hasn't been discussed so much either is. The sightline on Weed Street, if you're traveling south on Weed Street. It's difficult to see the existing crosswalk crossing over Weed Street because there's a, there's a slight crest of a hill. So you can't see that sidewalk. If you're coming south on Weed Street, all that you can see is maybe the tops of those. Pedestrian crossing signs as you're approaching. The Elm Street intersection. So the line of sight is very challenged there, just from the geography of the land there, it's. Got really nothing to do with people. Cutting people off or or, you know. Being aggressive, it's you can't see, you can't see oncoming traffic if you're coming out of Elm Street. It's difficult to see where you have to stop behind the stop bar and then you have to creep out. And then if you're traveling southbound on Weed Street as well, it's difficult to see that intersection. And it's even harder to see the crosswalk, which is south of Elm Street. So we've also discussed that tonight, coming out of Elm Street and making that left onto Weed Street. Is a cha- is the most challenging turn in that intersection. Well, you're turning from Elm Street. Into that crosswalk as well. Not only you're going into Weed Street. You're turning into that existing crosswalk that's south of Elm Street. Which is again, very. Dangerous and challenging if there's somebody in that crosswalk because you're looking for traffic. That is good traveling around thirty five, thirty six miles an hour is the eighty fifth percentile, which is. Consistent with the information that I've gathered over the years, and that's. Been consistent for a number of years. I've done studies and. Going back to two thousand nineteen and earlier and it stays relatively about the same. There's also. About five thousand cars that travel on that on Weed Street a day, but twenty five hundred cars in each direction, so. High volume of cars traveling at thirty five, thirty six miles an hour, most of them. Turning into. And and negotiating heavily used crosswalks because now we've purchased our own park. We've created the Green Link, we're encouraging people to walk in town. And it's a, it's a difficult intersection to cross when you're pedestrian. Because you you're not seen by southbound traffic and the traffic coming out of Elm Street. Is not really paying attention to you because they're trying to pay attention to vehicle traffic. So. Say whether it's dangerous or not, I can't say that because everybody here will have a different definition of what is dangerous and what's not. It's a challenging intersection, like many other intersections in New Canaan, but. That that's kind of what I've come up with from my traffic assessment in town for the past thirty years.
Thank you.
Maybe I could ask one question. We've heard quite a bit tonight on. Trucks, fire trucks, moving vans, large vehicles having to enter the site. That it's somewhat constricted and they have to turn. Into the oncom, basically block the entire road in order to make that turn in. Do you have any view on that? Is that?
That's not something that we would like to encourage. Cars driving on the wrong side of the road is is certainly not something that that. We want to advocate for, if we can avoid that.
So you would.
Pretty basic.
Tend to agree that.
Yeah, it was driving, car driving on the wrong side of the road, it's not ideal.
Not ideal because it's not safe.
Pretty basic.
I agree. Thank you. I I I don't know if the commission has any further questions. I I had only, we'd only asked the deputy chief to appear because it had been suggested that he had reviewed the plans previously and had offered an opinion before. And I, when I, when we spoke to him, he said he had not offered any opinion before, so we didn't, we wanted the record to be corrected.
I don't have an opinion one way or the other on on this site development, you know, I don't think. Hundred units is is going to change the intersection all that much, it's it's not going to help it. But it it is what it is, and and like I said. You know, it gets five thousand cars going through there a day, another hundred, two hundred. May or may not change it that much, but it it is already a challenging intersection for a variety of reasons.
Can I ask one question, just in terms of data? I'm not sure if you have this data, but I know in Connecticut law, you have citations for failure to yield on on. Crosswalks and. So you you know, you have three, four hundred dollar fine for people. That fail to yield to pedestrians on the crosswalk. I'm not sure if, I know you're constrained from a enforcement. Perspective, but I wasn't sure if you had data on complaints on that front, on that particular intersection or other.
I think there's more anecdotal evidence that it's difficult as a pedestrian than than our enforcement as far as citation, I mean. We could sit on Elm Street and write tickets for that all day long. I mean, you know, just people just don't stop for people in crosswalks anymore. That's everywhere, you know, but but we don't have. A high, higher percentage of of infractions written there than anywhere else for that violation.
Okay, so that's not the data we, okay, thanks, it's good.
Yeah, Mr. Green. Yeah, just briefly. I. No, I I have some other comments, but they're largely in the reports. I would just ask that the. Commission, I didn't see a CV or qualifications for Mr. Thompson, and I think that would be very helpful to have his. CV or resume in the record on his qualifications and because we certainly appreciated his testimony. And I didn't see that, and I think that would be helpful to have in the record.
Sure.
I think that Mr. Kingsbury had talked about, described some of his qualifications, so I think that's in the record. I think with that. I am going to rest and. I want to thank the commission for your patience and and hearing us. And once again. I know that we have characterized sort of the burden, and I know the commission's heard it many times, but once again, I would seek an opinion from Attorney Gelderman. On on the standard, on the review here and the burden and the ability of this commission. Consider the various factors that I described and thanks again. I don't know if you have any questions?
Other question? I think we're good.
I I do. Should do. So James Bash. Wondering i- in the case law history under for eight thirty G applications, whether or not scale. Of the project or the inconsistency of that scale with the surrounding properties has ever been a basis for a denial. Of an of an eight thirty G application. And, you know, that has. Or that denial has been sustained at Superior Court. Do you know anything in case law history where scale presents this issue?
Attorney Lasky, my colleague Lynda Lasky is here this evening and she has read a lot more of that case law that I that I have, but. My understanding, and she will correct me either now or later, but my understanding is. That in and of itself, scale is not a consideration. Scale can be considered only in the context. Or in the broader context that I've described of those considerations, the other considerations, obviously. Once again, we talked about public health and safety concerns, but. Once again, I've raised. The the notion that this commission can consider lessening congestion in the streets, securing safety from fire, panic flood and other dangers. Promoting health and general welfare, providing adequate light and air, protecting the state's historic tribal, cultural and environmental resources. You're balancing those concerns with the need for affordable housing in the community, so. In and of itself, if you say, oh, this building is large, I don't think that that forms the basis.
Matter if it was ten stories high and everything else in the surrounding area is a single family home, that would be A okay by eight thirty G standards, as long as everything else is in compliance. Is that correct?
Fortunately, I think that may be the state of.
It's good for people to know that, at the very least.
I have one short question.
Yep.
And it's important because last month I asked very specific yes, no question of the traffic engineer. I said. Are cars trying to leave this site going to be blocked in? And the answer was no. This exit is a hundred and eighty feet from the intersection. Both your traffic engineers said yes to that. So which is it? Next month, am I going to get, are we going to be back to no? Because this month we're back to yes. And Mr. Monteleone said a queue of nine vehicles is two hundred and twenty five feet. Does last week's, last month's traffic engineer think that a car is twenty feet? And this this month, a car is twenty five feet? I mean. It bothers me that we're bouncing around month after month between expert and expert. To the basic question, if I'm trying to leave that site, am I blocked or am I not blocked?
So so you, as I said, you are the finder of fact here and you'll, you heard the experts and you've heard the experts this evening and you have to make that judgment. I think Mr. Monteleone, I know is still here and he can comment on that question if.
Like, is there a standard size car that we use or do we use Hondas one month and we use Cadillacs the next? I mean, I I don't know.
Smart cars one month, suburban is the next.
It bothers me that we can't agree on this on a common standard, a hundred and eighty feet we can agree on. But the answer yes, no on that changes depending on on which expert, so.
I think you had two traffic dedicated traffic. Engineers or dedicated traffic engineers and don't do traffic engineering in addition to civil engineering. Who have offered you an opinion that it does, but you're, once again, you were weighing that, but I would defer to Mr. Monteleone if he wants to offer a comment on that.
Yes, so so, yeah, you bring up a very good point. So the issue is, is that we use twenty five feet because it's a rolling queue. So cars are not nose to nose in that queue. That's not how you drive. You need to leave space in between as vehicles keep stopping and starting because it's going to be. That type of a of an operation as you're going to the stop sign. So you keep getting these ebbs and flows of movement and therefore it reverberates back to the point where, you know, nine vehicles. Would be about twenty five feet per vehicle because because of the space in between each each vehicle. And allowing for for enough room so they're not hitting into each other. Because of that starting and stopping nature.
I note that parking spaces are narrowly like eighteen feet long and.
Correct.
If you think about it, cars would have four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten feet between them and you see that all the time when you're stacked up at any. Stoplight, so I think that's. Is that, is that, is that a fair characterization?
Yeah, you you get it, you get them a little bit closer perhaps at a at a signal because as. As the the signal was stopped, cars aren't moving continuously, so so cars kind of creep up on each other. So you might, you might squeeze in, you know, twenty, twenty two feet in in that scenario, but because it's a stop sign and cars keep stopping, moving, stopping, moving. It's constantly, the queue is constantly moving, it's a, you know, a living queue basically, so you need to allow for more room in between each vehicle. So that they don't collide with each other.
So I'll, you know, I'll sit down at this point, but you still have Mr. Thompson here and he can comment that on as well, and he's your expert, so.
So one more question for you, sir, Mr. Green. General welfare, can you? Give us a little bit of a better sense of what general welfare could mean within the context of case law history for eight thirty G applications?
I think that. In the category of. It's the line in eight dash two B two is promote health and general welfare is one of the. Standards is one of the. uh, standards is one of the zoning, the standards that you are to consider as you adopt zoning regulations.
Understood. But is there any additional clarity clarity on actually what general welfare means in the context of case law that you're aware of?
I don't, I can't point to any case law that defines general welfare, as I say.
Or was used as an example to the extent it was projected. A rejection of a denial of that application was sustained on a general welfare basis.
I don't have that opinion. I'm not familiar with an opinion that said that it was rejected on that basis on a general welfare alone.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Attorney Green. We have any other neighbor representatives, any consultants, experts, anybody before we go to the more general public? Okay, um, who would like to address this application?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Eileen Thomas, and I live at thirty-three Woods End Road. Um, and I'm actually representing a number of my neighbors who live on Woods End Road who can't be here tonight because of timing and school vacation. Um, and I just wanted to bring up a couple of other points. I think that might be useful to think about in terms of traffic and safety in particular. Um, and really in terms of trying to make the connection and the causality between congestion and public safety. While um, we, there's a lot of talk about the congestion in the back on Elm Street. Um, there has been less focus and talk about the congestion and backup on Weed Street, and particularly how it affects Woods End Road in particular, because um, are the end of our road is the north side of this development. Um, Woods End Road is actually a difficult intersection as a number of other difficult intersections have been pointed out. Um, because it is a steep uphill with very poor sightlines, both right and left. So to leave our road, you need to accelerate from a stop at that road to get onto Weed Street. And when traffic is backed up, which it often is, uh, particularly on the southbound side of Weed Street in the morning and in the evenings, you cannot often see well enough to make a safe right-hand turn onto Weed Street. Um, and while there have not been a lot of recorded accidents at Weeden Elm, thank God, um, there have been a lot of near misses. Um, and um, I didn't know whether it's useful to have anecdotal evidence, as the police chief pointed out, around near misses, both on pedestrian walkways, but also in near misses in terms of driving and people walking out of Woods End Road onto Weed Street. I'm gonna talk about two specific incidences that affected my family over the past five years. Uh, one was, um, there are frustration. What happens with driver frustration is that people try to pass around the backed up cars on Weed Street in front of Woods End Road uh, to try to speed past them and get out of the jam that happens um, because of the intersection at Weeden Elm. Um, and there was one incident where um, on a northbound on Weed Street, as um, my husband was trying to come out of Woods End Road and make a left-hand turn northbound onto Weed Street, somebody passing southbound came out across, which you cannot see because of the backup of the cars and narrowly missed um, hitting him. Uh, there was another incident where it happened to me going in the opposite direction. And in both cases, that passing car, which was probably two or three cars away from where we were coming out, you couldn't see until you were already into the drive lane of Weed Street. So um, in terms of trying to to define what's dangerous and what's not dangerous, clearly it seems like it's a question for clarification in some of these hearings, and I thought some anecdotal evidence might be helpful. The other thing that occurred to me is that um, I believe that the Mr. Thompson was talking about traffic study data that was coming from twenty sixteen. Um, that not twenty twenty-one, which clearly has some issues. Um, but there were two things that have changed since twenty sixteen that I think also really affect traffic safety. Uh, one sidewalks were built in twenty seventeen. And in twenty eighteen, the Green Link opened, and it was the sidewalks in the Green Link were pers- um, precisely built to increase pedestrian traffic from town down Weed Street uh, into Irwin Park, across Weed Street, and then into the nature center. Um, and again, from an anecdotal basis, um, the the number of pedestrians that have um, that now travel on Weed Street on these sidewalks have increased dramatically. Um, and those pedestrians are comprised not only adults, but children and many dogs and elderly. Um, in terms of coming out of Woods End Road, I can tell you that it has increased public safety concerns of my own as a driver. Um, because in addition to trying to look around the cars to make my turns, I now have to worry about that when it's clear that I check again that there's not a pedestrian coming. And again, because of poor sightlines, you can't see the pedestrians coming often until you are making your way out of weed, um, out of Woods End onto Weed Street. So um, the increase in the pedestrians, I think, um, and the concerns that that has are maybe not reflected in twenty sixteen numbers. Um, the the other thing that has happened uh, that was pointed out is that the sidewalk on Elm Street, which I often walk down trying from where we live to go into town. Um, as Mr. Monteleone pointed out, is really insufficient to have more than two people, two relatively small people walk side by side, especially if you have a dog. And if you're trying to pass someone, you actually have to walk into Elm Street to be able to pass somebody on that piece of sidewalk on Elm Street. And um, there's been a number of times where I have, you know, had again, a number of near misses as traffic is passing, and I'm a relatively agile person, not elderly, not a child, you know, not someone um, that is dealing with a pet. And in terms of the issues around those large trucks that are coming um, into to town, um, whether it's delivery trucks or construction or moving trucks, I personally have experienced incidences on Elm Street on that sidewalk, not only where the truck is backing up into its traffic, but frankly, into the sidewalk as well that then allows us to have to move back. Um, I can also talk about a a lot of anecdotal evidence about the crosswalk on Weed Street. Um, and again, if you want to question about whether it's a public safety danger or not, in general, um, most of the parents in the area and the neighborhood that that we live with will not let their children walk themselves into town because that crosswalk is too dangerous. And when I speak of children, I will talk about even middle school and early high school age kids, um, because the cars go too fast and going southbound on Weed Street, you can't see that intersection often until it's too late. Um, the last point that I guess I wanted to make is that the um, the other thing that I think has changed since twenty sixteen that that has impact on uh, public safety is the number of children in school buses that have increased, especially over the last two or three years. On my street alone, and uh, there's about eleven houses. Over the past three years, the number of school-aged children has increased from three to nineteen. Um, and that trend is happening all over town. Um, the number of children that um, are along Elm Street or along Weed Street that um, there's more time that's required by school buses, which I think then adds to congestion, particularly in the morning and the afternoon. And I think also the fact that there's many more children um, on those street corners. Um, I can speak specifically to Woods End Road where the cars are passing very quickly and or sometimes trying to pass each other to get by uh, makes for a dangerous situation. My very last point um, is is not about Woods End Road, but it's about the intersection um, that is at the corner of Kimberly Place, Pride's Crossing, Hillcrest Seminary and the uh, driveway of Acme. Um, because again, because I'm a frequent walker into town, and I believe that this is a um, a transit-oriented development, that that particular intersection is extremely dangerous at the moment, not only for cars, but also for pedestrians. Um, and then the impact of large uh, vehicles there as well. Uh, when you're talking about trying to have delivery vehicles potentially coming into this new development and a large truck coming back backing out of the Acme driveway, which happens a couple of times a day. Um, the the concern about traffic backup, um, about sightlines, and again, about pedestrian safety, I think is is something that needs to be considered as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address this application? Gentleman in the back? You're pointing at somebody else. Gentleman on the right, come on up.
It's a race.
I want to be sure that there's one fact that comes before your commission when you make the decision. Uh, my name's Dennis Taylor. I'm president of the Hatfield Muse Town Owners, the Townhouse Owners Association, three thirty Elm Street. Uh, all of us who live in that area know that the most accurate description of Elm Street is a stone wall chute. Everybody picks up speed coming down and they pick up speed going up. I want the commission to understand that in that approximate two hundred yards from Weed Street to Seminary, there are seven, seven entry and turning points already in existence. You've got a residence driveway at three thirty-nine Elm. You've got the driveway at Hatfield Muse where there are sixteen units. You've got a private lane on the north side of Elm Street with three houses. You have Kimberly Place with thirty-three homes. You have Pride's Crossing with fifty-one units. And then you have Acme Market with two hundred or plus uh, customers a day going in and out. In that two hundred yards, you already have uh, the mixture of uh, concern for public safety. What we'd like you to consider is what impact another plus or minus two hundred cars coming in and out right at that juncture up at the top will have on public safety on that entire route that is already a questionable thing. I want to be sure you understand that. It's not just the intersection. There's a lot of crossing and there's a crosswalk at Kimberly Place. And the people who walk dogs and have children don't have an easy time going across it. So I want to make sure you understand that whole strip. There's a lot of cross traffic, turning, and reason to not add two hundred plus cars coming out of seven fifty-one Weed Street. Thank you. Uh, I submitted a written statement to the commission. I'm hoping it's in the record.
I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Sean Kelly, and uh, along with my wife, we're the owners of seven sixty-two Weed Street, which was built in nineteen thirty-two and happens to be uh, just under a hundred and fifteen feet directly across the street from the proposed development. Um, Ms. Brooks, would you mind pulling up the slides that I prepared, and they're also on file? I'm going to be quick since a lot of this was previously addressed, but I I did think it was important to share, and I pronounce if it's necessary. Um, but I did think it was important to share as someone who walks uh, on Weed Street and Elm Street on the the sidewalks on a daily basis, my personal experiences, because they are um, they're real, and I've captured them with images um, that I've provided to the count, you know, to the commission. Um, I think it's really important to see the near misses that have been alluded to um, and that queuing um, a topic that's been addressed multiple times because traffic does queue up past the current entrance um, into the uh, the seven fifty-one Weed Street entrance on Elm. In addition, uh, something I'm, it's very important that I would like I'd like for the the presentation to be pulled up, um, because it shows visually. My home is unique, um, because of topography. It's my wetlands, which are in my backyard. It's about an acre of wetlands, is approximately thirty feet below. So let's go to the second half of that presentation. It's approximately thirty feet below the grade of seven fifty-one Weed Street. So let's uh, keep going here. Okay, perfect. So go to the next page, please. Um, so this just shows mo- the proximity of my home, uh, my property and the wetlands, which are noted in the yellow dash. And these are the wetlands that I really want to, you know, the commission to know because it's been omitted from a lot of this discussion. Again, these are thirty feet below the seven fifty-one uh, Weed Street proposal. Please go to the next slide. Uh, the next uh, presentation or next uh, slide shows where those wetlands are flagged and marked, and this has been done uh, prior to our ownership, but it this is on the public record, so you can have for your, look for yourself. But you can see um, where those red arrows point. Those are the flaggings of where the wetlands are on my property. Uh, the the green star you see there will be a reference point for a couple of pictures that I have on the next few slides, so please advance. So this just shows you uh, the vibrancy of our wetlands and how beautiful they are. But what's also important about wetlands is they serve a purpose. They serve a purpose for our environment. The water that flows into my wetlands ultimately flows into my neighbors, which flows into the Norroden River uh, watershed. And so we are treating our wetlands uh, very carefully, and we know uh, from moving into these wetlands that they do collect oil. They do collect debris from Weed Street, and we know that the water that flows off of Weed Street ultimately ends in our wetlands. Please continue. So here's an important view. Um, I I have this this picture on the left in two different slides. So this is a view from within the wetlands, and note the beauty of the flora and the fauna, and also the 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 actual water that you can see the frog pond noted on the right. Now go to the next slide, please. This is a a superimposed the west elevation of the proposed development here for two reasons. One, to show the size and scale. Now, this is approximate. I'm not an expert. But I used every bit of evidence from the proposal to show what would happen with the development from the uh, the west elevation. So this is the view. As you can see, two things happen. One, the view from the wetlands is is dramatically altered. And then two, you can see that sun that just peeking out. I I left that there for reference because the developers team mentioned a shadow or shade study in the last um, discussion. Well, I went to town hall and I watched that shade and shadow study. Two things were very apparent to me. One, um, there is a a dr- a drastic shade shadow that happens with the morning sun because this is looking east. But two, the shade and shadow study only included three seasons. So it included the spring uh, with an April um, measure. It included a summer, which was July, and a fall, but uh, and the fall was October, but did not include any references to winter. Now, I know the the commission needs to consider important facts here, but that shade and shadow study, but the fact of excluding winter, to me, I really um, believe and challenge the credibility of that study for its completeness. So I really do, um, we're we're very proud of our wetlands. These wetlands, by the way, and that flagged um, map are approximately a hundred and seventy-five feet from the proposed structure of the development. So this is really high impact, and I'm really concerned as a neighbor, but also for the downstream impacts uh, into the Norroden River. So the last slide is really for reference, and this is the um, the GIS topographical map, which shows the uh, the gradient change from the seven fifty-one Weed Street property on the right and my home, seven sixty-two Weed on the left, as well as the wetlands, which uh, the the mouse cursor is uh, is focusing on that general area. This is all in the town's record and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I I have a question. Um, do your wetlands actually connect or touch the uh, river?
Um, because of where we are, and you can see in the broader GIS map, not directly. Um, but I do have a a wetlands expert who's working with our family, and we do know obviously because of the water course, they flow given gravity into the Norroden River. And I believe from the map, it's approximately half a mile from my house.
Is it, uh, say a hundred feet?
Pardon?
Is it within a hundred feet?
Is my home within a hundred feet of the Norroden River? No.
Okay. But you're the what the wetlands are.
The wetlands are, yes, as you can go back to the the flagged area. So we we bought this home and closed on it on March first of twenty twenty-two, so relatively recently. Um, so that's where um, you can see uh, noted the structure of the home, um, kind of in of our home, which is um, in there, which is being um, identified. Um, and then those distances are um, are are listed there.
Great, thanks.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Can I ask one question just of Maria, just on the the wetlands?
Sure.
Yeah, Maria, can you spare your mind waiting a minute?
No.
Just one moment. Um, so I I noted in the memo July seventh um, that you are still going back and forth with on the applicants on some concerns you had of water absorption of the um, the non-permeable surfaces, the seventy percent. So it seemed you identified a number of uh, points of concern, P O Cs in that. As I kind of look at the geography of seven fifty-one, it one side cascades to the town and and exits towards that pipe in uh, that you described near that greens and the go, you're the other side of it kind of cascades down towards this gentleman's property, I think. So I was I was I was interested or the points of concern on on the. So I was, I was interested, are there the points of concern on the, the wetland side or they towards the town side?
So right now, our area that we're talking about in our memo is there's two areas. One is the catch basin at the intersection of Weed and Elm on the 751 property side with the crown of the road and the way that that road is that runoff from this parcel will hit that catch basin before it gets across the street to this neighbor's property, you know, in your typical storm events. The other area that we've addressed is the property line that abuts the four parcels that was part of the subdivision of the property. We see that there is actually a few discharge points, points of concern, as you would call it, but discharge points or design points. And the applicant just treats it as one linear point, but based on the topography that goes beyond the property line, you can see that there's our already established channels. So we're asking the applicant to address that and look at it in, in those points. But yes, we do have concerns with the quantity and quality of water going to the catch basin at the intersection of Weed.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yep. No, I think I know what you're saying. Thank you. Just want to clarify that as related to the wetlands. Thank you, John. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Jack Trefaro. I've been a businessman in New Canaan for over 50 years. And I just want to commend the, the people that have spoken about this tonight, trying to find ways to maybe stop this. But this is more before the younger people here that I just want to mention 25 years ago, the town also wasn't in the exact same situation with a development company, Avalon. And four of us, four New Canaanites went to the original zoning meeting and were surprised at the same thing that we were, the zoning board was being dictated what they could and could not do. And we felt that the home rule was being taken away from New Canaanites. So those four people, myself, Victor Chris Janer, Lou Squateri and Dudley Phillips worked on this for two years. Our group grew from four people to 200 people. And we were able to stop this development that was going to go into the parking lot next to the train station and move it. So I, I hope that these efforts are as successful.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like, yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Trevor Bradley. I live at 317 Elm, which is one of the abutting properties to the proposed development. My backyard literally touches up against the development site. I live there with my wife and three kids. We've been there for a little over a year. I'll try to be very brief. I strongly oppose the development and that's understating it. By way of background, I'm attorney. I did not write 830G nor would I ever want credit for that. But I am very familiar with the law as I think everyone in this room has done their research, has come to be familiar with it to some extent. I think it would be helpful to provide a little bit of a summation of what we've heard today and throughout the application process. And before I do that, I just want to make clear for the record. I'm not speaking on behalf of my firm. I'm not here as a representative of my firm. I'm here speaking as a concerned citizen. My firm and I take our duties as attorneys in our conflicts of interest seriously. So I just want that to be very clear. So as Attorney Green mentioned, and as I'm sure the town attorney has made clear or will make clear, the law allows you, the commission, to deny the application where it is necessary to protect health, safety, or other legally recognized and acceptable public interest. I'm not going to repeat everything we've heard today from the experts, but in summary, every expert that we've heard from today, whether it was the towns expert or the experts that a group of attorneys or excuse me, a group of neighbors have put together, have identified specific and articulated specific threats to health, safety and other public interests. And Commissioner Engel, I believe you had a questions about the applicant has his own expert saying something completely different than what the town experts are saying or what our experts are saying. And Attorney Green said, you are the fact finder. That's for you to determine. And in the cases I litigate, we refer to this as the battle of the experts. You have one expert on one side saying one thing. You have experts on the other side saying the complete opposite. How do you, you're the fact finder, make a determination in that situation? Right? You have experts that all have fancy degrees. They all have supposed years of experience in the relevant field. I submit to you and encourage you to use your common sense. Right? I just want to comment on a few things we've heard from the prior, when the applicant made their, made their presentation. Right? The applicant is proposing to add 102 units, 182 parking places, a crosswalk and a single entrance and exit. At an intersection, that's a primary intersection in town, a challenged intersection, leading gateway to the center of town. Their expert says it adds de minimis or minor traffic. The applicant's drainage expert concedes that the development site is on the top of the hill, the local high point. It will increase the impervious cover significantly, approximately 90%. The expert concludes the surrounding properties, which he concedes are downhill, will not be affected by the additional water runoff. Another expert opined that this 102 unit, five story building in a single unit, one acre residential zone neighborhood will have no impact on the value of the abutting properties. Another expert opined that the development would not negatively impact the environment. But I did not see them even consider the wetlands 175 feet away that we just heard Mr. Green talk about. 30 situated 30 feet downhill from the development site. And the drainage issues we've already talked about. These opinions I submit to you are incredulous. And as you, as a fact finder, you need not credit them and you should not credit them. Right? I know you take your jobs as commissioners very seriously. I've been impressed with your attention and the questions you've asked throughout this application process. The future of New Canaan is in your hands and that's not hyperbole. I ask that you exercise your authority, your discretion in the interest in the health and safety of the town of New Canaan and its residents. And not an out of town developer only interested in his own monetary profit. Right? I trust that you will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to address the application, please? Yes, sir.
So I hesitate to follow Trevor. My name's Chakam O'Landy. His neighbor, 313 Elm, I'm a budding property. Also as referenced, I believe the, the access to the town utilities goes through our property and our collective properties that the applicant would like to use. I live, I live there with my three kids, eight, six and four. They all go to West School. First, thank you all for what you do as volunteers for New Canaan. I mean, it was hot in here temperature. You know, you're dealing with this all the time. I'm impressed. You can see the positive work that's been done in New Canaan over generations. I mean, this is obvious. You, you look at, look at the maps outside here and compare it to today. It's really, really impressive. You've ensured the town's well planned, works for the community. The planning benefits us all who reside here today and will reside here in the future and those of us who don't live here, but just invest, work or otherwise benefit because New Canaan is what New Canaan is. I've gotten more, sort of given more feedback to town government than I ever thought possible over the last three years, but I'll give it another go here. And I hope some of you have read a memo I wrote to the Water Pollution Control Board on June 7th. It was referred, some of the issues with the sewer were referred to here. I went into a fair amount of detail on the sewer situation. I've learned a lot about the difference between sort of stormwater systems and combined systems versus independent systems. I haven't received a reply to the memo, but none of the data that I've seen since, or frankly, any of the information that I received tonight changes my view on what I wrote up in that document. I look forward to, to detailed feedback and I encourage you to ask for detailed feedback. We hear a lot of sort of statements about numbers being thrown around. Is it 1.5 million is the capacity? Is it 1.7 million is the capacity? Is the surge capacity 5.5? Is it seven? What exactly is the number? The difference between summer, winter, how that works? I think I lay out the, the facts of the situation fairly transparently and also with regards to how this property sits today with regards to the sewer situation. So happy to answer any questions either now or another time. People have done a great job on traffic. I think if you don't trust us as neighbors, talk to, talk to Kevin, you know, over there. Kevin knows the area well. If you just look at the sidewalk on the other side of the street, it's narrow. I got four kids. I go, three kids. I go into town a lot. My eight-year-old has to hold the four-year-old's hand and I have to hold the six-year-old's hand so we can get down that sidewalk. That's without snow or any of that kind of stuff. Just do the math on it. If you want to talk about the crosswalk, the deputy police chief makes an excellent point about line of sight. This is exactly why you have to hold the kids' hands. The yellow flashing light is not a stop signal. It's beware. But people are cruising down there at high speed. Frankly, I have no idea why there's not a three-way stop there today. There's certainly justification for it, but there are massive issues with that corridor. When I walk up to Irwin with the kids, we cross that all the time. You know, this shouldn't be about like, okay, we had a, we had a fatality or we had an accident. Therefore it's a bad corner. We all know it's a bad corner. That's just the, that's just the facts. One thing I think we do need to talk about is the sort of if not here, then where argument. I'm sure people will come that, come up with that. I addressed this in my memo because it talks about the P O C D. The P O C D is very clear about the opportunities that the town had. The 2011 document talks about areas which can be developed for this. Some of those actions were taken and some of those actions were not taken. So this is not an issue of we don't want affordable housing. This town has a plan on how it should develop. And the beauty of sort of how you work in a collective community is we agree to a plan, people abide by it and we move forward on that basis. When you start having independent decisions made that are ad hoc, you lose the grounding, you lose the trust, you lose sort of the general community understanding on how this thing works. And then you get into a bad situation, which brings you to, brings me to my particular situation. And of course it's not just about me, but it is about me. So I'll, I'll just have to be honest about it. I am adjacent to a property that has, is one acre zone with one house on it. And people are telling me, okay, well now we're going to put up 102 units. And you know what? There's nothing you can do about it and just deal with it. So, and also people tell me that there's no impact to house values or anything else. So I'm not a, we're well off and we're fortunate to live in New Canaan, but I, I'm not, you know, living on vast streams of cash. So the house is important to us as a family asset. As I think it is to many people in this town, frankly. So what happens when you rezone? And when you rezone for a specific piece of property, is it you, not you as bad people, but the person who's rezoning is transferring economic value to that property that did not exist before. So if I understand what the commission is considering is making a specific rezonement for that 3.1 acre property. And so the reality is the, that property is being provided economic advantage and the properties next to it are told to deal with it. So you, people will cite many sources. There's no impact to this, that and the other. I encourage you to look at a great study by Stanford Graduate School of Business, pretty reputable place. They did work in December 17th, talking about the economic impacts on pre-zoned properties and how that relates to the development of in that was called, I, I can't remember what the exact term was subsidized or affordable housing. Essentially it's the use of rezoning. And I just read the study, come to your own conclusions for it, but I'm not sure anybody here can advocate to say that the neighbors next to this property are going to see increased value. That's not because we don't want people who have affordable requirements to live next to us. This is just a fact that you're living, instead of living next to one house, you're living next to 102 homes and we heard about the traffic issue. So therefore, if you are rezoning that property, you're providing that individual, or in this case a professional developer access to money to do that, which may be for the greater public good. And so we ask you, it's not popular with our neighbors, but I've been transparent about it. We ask you to provide us that same opportunity. We live right next to this property. There should be no reason why we're not also equally rezoned. And either we or somebody else or the developer at 751 will redevelop it in those lines. Do I think this is the right strategy for New Canaan? Absolutely not. Have you seen me write copious volumes of stuff about this thing? Why I think this is nuts? Absolutely. Will I continue to do it? For sure. But there's no guarantee that we will win. There's no guarantee of that. So we have to protect the downside as individual, as our individual family. So I ask that this is not given an individual rezoning, that you at least extend the zoning to 313 Elm. And if you want to talk to the other people who are my neighbors and if they want to be rezoned too, I think we all wrote a letter a while ago, then they can join me on that effort. So lastly, John, you and I had a, a public exchange. So this is, should be totally acceptable to people, but I encourage the P and Z as sort of masters of, of property in, in New Canaan to run a series of public sessions about all the public land that we have that's under or unutilized. There actually is a lot of property in this town that could be repurposed for other means. And that would require a genuine public discussion, not picking one property off at a time. Talk about it all. I've had the chance to look through all this great data that the town planners put out about who owns property around here. And when you look at it, there are a ton of professional investors that have one, two, three, four different properties and they can easily put these together in some cases to build a larger unit. So this will just go and go and go unless we as a town make sure that we have a handle on this. And my last point, Jack, I actually wanted to meet you. So that was a great chance tonight. The development that you're talking about was moved somewhere else. And I believe like 20 years have passed now. So the affordable aspect of that, I believe is starting to roll off. And the, the challenge with, I tend to be a small government into private enterprise, but the challenge when private enterprise does projects like this is time passes. And therefore these properties come back onto the market. So it's a constant treadmill. So whether we get the moratorium next year or not, we will have more units that we will have to refill. Because the units from that development you're talking about will come off. So this is something we as a community have to do. Don't look at, at us who have been engaged on this as people who don't want this kind of development. We do, we just want it to be smart, fair and a good strategy that's implementable. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to address this application?
Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and all interested parties, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Irene Barak. I am the owner of 781 Weed Street. It's been my home since 1977, four generations of us, my late husband, myself, our children, grandchildren, and now a great-grandchild. All these younger families have brought around me. They have found the education and security which our work over the years has provided and has given it value. Please note, we each bought our homes in a designated one acre, single family zone area, excuse me. It's not exaggerated to say that I've seen It's not exaggerated to say that I've seen many changes over that period of time. More traffic, faster traffic, busy thoroughfare. It's all been hit on tonight. This construction by virtue of the number of occupants will contribute heavily to the volume. And confusion. I can attest from many years of experience that traffic studies do not accurately reflect volume or patterns. I believe when the gentleman says 5,000 cars, I never counted them. But I have sat in that house and watched the traffic fly by the house. I even had at one point to ask the post office, please to move the post box, may I, across to my driveway? It was a hazard to get across the road to get the mail and I couldn't ask anyone else to do it. We have been told that the proposed, proposed development would not impact neighboring property values. I disagree vehemently. And how many of us have envisioned this proposed project actually in place? The sheer magnitude, the footprint, gone is the space, the greenery, light, shadow. All currently in sync with the surrounding properties. Once built, this structure being a solid mass will dominate the town. The ridge on which it would sit being many feet above Elm Street between Park and Main. The finished product will be years in the making preceded by the dust, dirt, cacophony, disruption of disruption of construction, presence of massive machinery, backhoes, giant trucks, cranes. Congestion. And when completed, I will, would argue that properties surrounding seven fifty one would never realize their true value. And would forever maintain a discounted value if this development proceeds. It is true that I have a much to lose being the owner of the property, much affected by the development. It wraps itself around two sides of my property. I've alluded to some of the intangibles, the loss of balance, the loss of greenery. There are more that I have not mentioned such as displacement of wildlife. This morning I had a doe and her fawn outside my bedroom window. I came in at 1:30. I had two fawns inside my gate. And I am opposite Woods End Road. This is a heavily trafficked road, but the wildlife seems to accommodate it. And they are beautiful. I'm a little worried about chicks, but that's all right. These are not temporary changes. They are forever changes. And while my property and those of us who surround seven fifty one would be affected by the greatest proportion, my comments today are universal. This committee stands in the gap between the forces of fundamental and irreversible change. Justifiable perhaps under the guise of eight thirty G and the. All the other side being the preservation of our properties, those of us who side by side inhabit the lands around seven fifty one. As well as the preservation of our town, as was mentioned. I implore you to commit your conscience to maintaining our current and zoning statutes. Please be all of courage to stand in the gap for us and for preserving the future of our town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Like Jacomo and Sean and some of the other speakers, I'm a neighbor of the property. Bob Janaja, resident at eight oh nine Weed Street. Have a small property line of budding seven fifty one weed and also in one of the board members and officers of Save New Canaan, Inc. Organization of our neighbors that are working on a number of initiatives, one of which is. Trying to stop this development. The, I agree with nearly everything the prior speakers have said this evening. A couple of things I just wanted to highlight. I have a child that has been attending the West School, catches a school bus across the street. And even though the school bus has that little stop arm that goes out, we won't let her cross the street by herself as it is. Because I've seen cars go around the school bus before. It's terrifying. We've also like Eileen Thomas, when we were on a little lane with four houses off of Weed. When I'm waiting to turn into my driveway, because maybe a landscaping truck is coming out. I've had cars try to pass me and causing near head on collision with, with a truck that's coming out of the, the driveway. I was a math major in college. It was a long time ago, but I still remember the difference between a point and a flow. There was a lot of conversation today about the 5,000 cars per day that traverse Weed Street. If you're adding 200 vehicles to the neighborhood, you're not adding 200 trips per day. We have four cars in my household and four drivers and each of those cars is making multiple trips in and out of the driveway. So if you add 200 cars to the neighborhood, you're probably adding six to 800 trips a day down Weed Street. You're, it's a 15% increase in flow. It's not a, a 5% increase or 2% increase in flow. I think that's a real misnomer that got caught up today. One other comment related to traffic, you know, I drive to Greenwich every morning to commute to my office there. The, during rush hour, particularly during the school year, there's a lot of backup at Old Stanford Road. To, you know, get on to the Merritt or to go to Point South to 95. You, everyone can see the parking lot, the lumberyard parking lot. People aren't commuting into Manhattan the way they used to, and I don't know why the residents of this proposed development would be any different. So I think you have to assume that, that there's going to be a lot less train commutation that's been bargained for. There's going to be more traffic that's been bargained for. And there're going to be backups at places that are well beyond the Weed Elm intersection as a result of this. The last comment I'll make is related directly to the comments about stormwater overflow. I don't, I don't understand the zoning well enough to understand how a property could be allowed to be 70% impermeable surfaces. And how that, the, the stormwater there. Could possibly be allowed to flow into the, into the public storm sewer system, particularly given overflow situations. The, the town engineer and others talked a lot about how, you know, given those overflows, the runoff would flow into the, to the town stormwater system. And possibly overrun the town stormwater system and, but. It's sort of ignoring the fact that there's properties and neighbors and abutting downhill wetlands and whatnot. And that, that water flow doesn't just stay in the street. It goes into people's yards. It goes into people's basements. And I would encourage the planning and zoning committees, you think about the general welfare of the town that you're, that you're here to promote and to protect. That you consider the damage that this property might do, not just in property values, which others have talked about. But you know, water is a very, very damaging. Element when it gets into people's yards and homes and does tremendous amounts of damage. And as others have talked about, the frequency and severity of extreme weather events is only increasing. And if we're, if we use backwards looking data, we're going to get this completely wrong. And I appreciate your time and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Liz Moore. I live at three fifteen Elm. I'm a neighbor of many of the other speakers that have been up here tonight. I think that it's, I applaud you for listening and giving us the opportunity to speak. I guess I would just like to say for a minute, in the interest of time and respect to everyone that's been sitting here in the 80 degree temperatures for hours on end. Can I just see a, a show of hands of the residents that are, have, feel like they have safety concerns about 102. Resident building going up on this intersection. In addition to these hands, there are about 35 other, 30, 3,500 other residents in New Canaan who have been. Who have shown concern and been active in expressing safety concerns with this application. And I guess I would say while lawyers, engineers, and other professionals provide evidence today, is truly the eyeball. Reports and witnesses of the neighbors who live and traverse this area daily. These are the stories that truly represent the significant health, safety, and environmental concerns we have for our families and any new residents that would occupy this space. I'll let the, the experts give you the testimony. But I just would like to say, I think that it's, it's fair to say that, that there's a broader concern. Than just the, the chairs that are filled here tonight or the, I think there's 100 people on Zoom. There's many other residents that may be traveling over the summer and not available to be at this meeting tonight that have expressed concern.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Lynn, I guess we have to open this up to Zoom land.
Yep. If anyone is on Zoom and wants to speak, if you could just raise your yellow icon hand so we can find you.
You don't see anybody. That's perfectly fine.
Actually don't see anyone.
Great. Okay, thank you. Attorney Hollister, by process, would you like any, to make any remarks before we adjourn?
Thank you. Tim Hollister representing the applicant. I just want to pose a question. Do we have a plan now for July 26th? What do you envision happening there?
I intend to continue this to the July 26th meeting.
Your next regular meeting for more public comment.
That's correct, sir. I'm keeping it, I'm keeping it open.
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, before we adjourn, look, this is a really difficult issue. And the one thing that I want to say is I want to thank all of you for professionalism. That you've given us testimony. In past hearings, this isn't the first time we've been in a difficult situation. And one of the things that I always say is we need to act like New Canaan and acting like New Canaan is having class. In what you go about things. And so thank you for doing that tonight. This, this hearing is adjourned to July. What date did I just say? 26. Thank you. Everybody get on safe.